The hour of 12:30 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council will come to order. And the clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Holder.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
And Mayor Keely.
Present. We have established a quorum. Any council members have a disqualification statement regarding closed session? Okay, very good. Public comment regarding closed session, this would be the opportunity for anyone to address us on a matter on our closed session agenda today. See, no one, do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush?
We do not.
We do not. All right. The real property items are going to be discussed in closed session. They are listed on today's agenda. What we will do is, we will adjourn into closed session and then we will return no earlier than 1:30. We could show up later if closed session goes longer. We will either be here at 1:30 or later. We will now stand adjourned into closed session. The hour of 1:30 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council... Thank you. Thank you. The hour of 1:30 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council will come to order. Clerk will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro.
Present.
Brunner.
Present.
Newsom.
Present.
Holder.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Keely.
Present. We have established a quorum. We are now on oral communication. This would be the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on a matter under our ju... Let me ask if you could take your conversations, if you could lower those conversations. Thank you very much. This would be the opportunity for anyone to address the city council on a matter under our jurisdiction, not on today's agenda for a period of time, not to exceed two minutes. My guess is, many of you are here on that issue. So what we will do is, I will start with the first person in line. We will hear that person. Then what we will do is, if there's anyone online who wants to join us, we'll toggle back and forth between somebody online, somebody in chambers, and so on. So let me start with the first person who happens to be in line. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Pardon me, I didn't think I was first. Yeah, my name is James Ewing Whitman. It was a fascinating meeting at the supervisors. They railroaded something through where they applied, there was some kind of misunderstanding, but it was more of the FEMA stuff. It was really quite misleading. I was looking for some specific information to read, the Title 18 U.S. codes and the number for one being misprisoned of treason and the other one for being suspicious conspiracy, which all seven of those members are absolutely guilty of and don't think that all of you aren't either. So, uh, couldn't find that stuff. But I did read something in the record that I don't think I'll have an opportunity with the time that's left, so I'll do that later. It's amazing what's going on in our supposed government, you know? The information that I have, the fourth branch of government, which you could call it lots of names, took over long before the Organics Act of February 23rd, 1871, which created the corporate maritime admiralty flags, those flags that have the gold fringe for the corporation. Right outside the building, you have different flags. This identifies you as a slave citizen with privileges and liberty. Definition between the word inalienable and unalienable are really quite different. It's really simple. Unalienable rights are those that give us equality with all nature, with Creator. Inalienable are those that are made by men. So I didn't have my notes, it's nice to be here. And I'll talk again soon. Once again, the metocrats, regionalism and non-law governments are destroying the United States and that's any city that has a management system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online? We'll take the first person online, then we'll be right with you. Person online, good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Keely. Hi, it's Bradley Snyder. I want to talk briefly about who I voted for for president, Robert F. Kennedy Jr. And why I voted for him is something that, you know, certainly not everybody would agree with him as somebody who deserves the recognition of being president of the United States. Now, one thing he's hit upon that's currently in controversy and a lot of people certainly criticize some of the gimmick science that partisan politics tends to elevate. The paracetamol, acetaminophen as a potential cause of such high rates of autism spectrum disorders actually is something that I, as a scientist, as a person who studies medicine, bears, you know, is basically due to be studied, that, you know, is worthwhile studying, is a possible cause. Tylenol as a preparation was introduced in 1955 as an elixir for children. Prior acetaminophen formulations had narcotics mixed with them. I don't think anybody's going to argue that autism spectrum disorders are, you know, a higher absolute magnitude in the modern world. McNeil Consumer Healthcare is the big loser if they find that Tylenol is not appropriate for pregnant women. It's known to cause asthma in children and that certainly applies to preterm neonates, which you'd have to imagine, having, struggling for air, even if it's coming from your own lungs or the mother's lungs and mother's heart, is certainly something which, yeah, three seconds, Fred. It's certainly something that bears studying. Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keely and city council members. My name is Dana Wagner, I'm the director of Meals on Wheels for Santa Cruz County. I'm here today to share some data with you from the fiscal year that just ended on June 30th. For fiscal year 2025, Meals on Wheels delivered nearly 164,000 meals to 988 homebound seniors. We conducted over 2,100 wellness checks and our participants to ensure their well-being and coordination of services. Our 47 volunteer drivers provide weekly greetings and let Meals on Wheels staff know if they notice anything of concern that requires further attention. At our congregate dining seats, including London Nelson, we served close to 32,000 meals to 638 older adults in fiscal year 2025. We also arranged for educational presentations on fraud and scam prevention, a topic of great concern for the elderly, dental health, and lowering PG&E bills. In the city of Santa Cruz, we delivered over 61,000 meals to 337 city residents and conducted over 700 wellness assessments. Seniors participating in Meals on Wheels are overwhelmingly satisfied with the service they receive. 100% of those receiving home-delivered meals stated that our service helps them avoid institutional placement and 96% of congregate diners state that the congregate meals help them to eat healthier. I wanted to present these numbers to you today to let you know that city and county dollars are well spent and optimally utilized to ensure the health and well-being of our growing senior population. On behalf of the over 1,600 seniors participating in Meals on Wheels, I am very grateful for your support. Thank you so much for your time.
Well, thank you for your great work. Thank you very much. Do we have someone online? Person online, good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Yes, hold on, this is Garrett. Hey, the situational opinions I'm going to relate are only based on my personal factual experience and the anecdotes of others. I don't believe healthcare in Santa Cruz is as good as over the hill and there was and is probably by design a multi-year shortage here of doctors and staff leading to year-long waits to find a new or any doctor accepting new patients. Specialist wait times are long and overall patient healthcare suffers. The reasons are possibly business economic related decisions, but very full appointment schedules are drawn out to weeks or months and being maxed out leads to mistakes. The reason I relate this to is that your push to add thousands to the population of Santa Cruz, I predict will make this situation worse, at least for a while, and I'll see any rush on the healthcare's part to staff any higher. People have to die or move away to open up slots for new patients. That means the busy horror show ER and urgent care are about all this available to them. As to my opinion of poorer healthcare, anecdotally, a Santa Cruz doctor recommended a pacemaker for my girlfriend and upon a second opinion from over the hill found drug treatment was the better option. And when the first doctor was read the riot act, by the second, he said, "How am I going to make any money on that?" My recent very serious, potentially grave health issue was rife with poor decision-making and taken number no rush healthcare, resulting in a three and a half month delay from the first sign of trouble to receiving any actual treatment as my condition worsened somewhat permanently. A poor office procedure decision immediately resulted in a trip to the ER, waiting three and a half hours to be seen, where my condition was made somewhat worse in some ways, including a misdiagnosed MRI that I was assured meant I had an 80% chance of cancer, resulting in an unnecessary biopsy operation wherein no treatable cancer was found or delays. And finally, I'd say a rushed operation I did need, where one of the surgical sites opened up soon after surgery. And they still have a hole in my stomach that's going to be troublesome for some while. I predict older people are going to suffer adding six to eight, 10,000 more people.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon. My name's, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Ross Kelly. I am your ranger in limbo. I was here two weeks ago and trying to get some clarification as to my status of my job. I've been out of work for over a year now. I reached, I reached out to you guys, got no response. I reached out to my deputy director, sent him two emails since I was here last, which I CC'd the city attorney on, as well as the director of the water department, and their So, what I'd really like to know, you know, frankly, not communicating with your employees about the status of the situation is not only disrespectful and hurtful for the employees, financially impactful and harmful, but is just really rude. You've got a lot of people who want to talk about their stuff, I'm not going to waste your time. But again, I've been out of work for over a year because you guys have not given me any kind of clarification. Now, there is actually a really good, simple workaround that may not even involve the water department. It would satisfy me and actually benefit the city. I'd be more than glad to discuss that possibility, but once the investigation comes back, whichever way it goes, there's only two paths once the investigation comes back. I will not be open for discussing the alternative afterwards. But it would be nice to have somebody from the city tell me what the status of my job is. The questions I asked the deputy director were reasonable, fair, and not overly intrusive. I think he could give me the respect of answering me. But again, like I said, I also CC'd the city manager and the director herself, and I've heard nothing back from anybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone online? Okay. Person online, good afternoon and welcome.
There is nobody online.
Good afternoon. Good to see you, sir.
Hello. How are you today?
Very well, Ken.
Well, so, it was back in June when I appeared in front of you last, asking for you to contribute money towards the city of Santa Cruz contract with SEIU 521. We just got our initial offer from the premier side of the bargaining team and it was downright People need more than 2% COLA in order to survive in Santa Cruz. All the people behind me become hopping mad when they hear about 2% COLA. It's a matter of where you begin bargaining as much as when you end up in bargaining. You can't insult the other party. Along with poor COLA, we're being asked to extend our, our probation, thank you very much, our probation from six months to a year, which is quite amazing, especially when you consider that there are half again as many managers and supervisors as employees. So you have two employees to every one supervisor or manager. That's super top-heavy. Why they can't bother to figure out if we're actually working hard enough in six months is beyond any of us. So, we'd like some movement at the table, that actually makes some sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Arden. I'm a library assistant too at Santa Cruz Public Libraries. I'm also on the bargaining team for SEIU, representing the library branches. Back in June, me and three of my coworkers, some of who are here today rather courageously talked about the physical violence that we are experiencing at work. To recap, in April, there was an average of an assault a week on a library worker in Santa Cruz. We're still facing all those issues. The only change since then has been to extend library hours and bargaining has begun since then and we, the bargaining team, handed what I thought was the bare minimum to your city bargaining team, which is HR Director Sarah DeLeon and the lawyers Tim Davis and Joanna Kwong. And this bare minimum was, if we get assaulted at work, let us go home with pay. Don't make us use our own accruals, allow us to go home. They thanked me for my courage and then their counterproposal was insulting. It was adding a line to an APO that says, "If a coworker of yours dies at work or if you experience a traumatic event, as long as the operational need does not outweigh the emotional stress of the worker, as a guide, your manager may give you up to eight hours off." It doesn't even say that we won't have to use our own time. This is the bare minimum. A lot of us work right across the street. Y'all get to sit here making a lot more than us in your locked offices, meanwhile, we're over there, we're in the community, we start at $23 an hour. We're people, please treat us as such, pay us more and at the bare minimum, let us go home. If we're sexually assaulted, physically assaulted, we have someone spit in our mouths, those are all things that have happened at the last six months at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. So as the next person is coming up, let me just say, we appreciate your enthusiasm. Not sure we need cheering after every single speaker, but anyway, good afternoon, nice to see you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Renee Belling. I have been a city worker for 36 and a half years. My pay raises keep track with rent here. I can't actually afford to live here in Santa Cruz. Right now, I live in San Jose and I am doing the commute, which actually is a better commute than to Watsonville, but really, even though I can afford to live in San Jose, it's still more than half of my paycheck. We need more than 2% a year as a COLA. That's not keeping up with anything. We have been told by the city, Sarah DeLeon, that we are keeping up with inflation. Well, not quite, but even if you're keeping up with inflation, our market level rates of our salaries, my position is 20% below market rate. That does not help me to live within a short commute of where I work. I'm actually lucky, I work in the library, but I work behind the scenes, so I am not dealing with the public all day. Truthfully, if I was working with the public all day, I would be gone from California because once I quit and I retire, I can't afford to live here. So I will be leaving the state because I have never been paid enough to actually live here all 36 years that I've worked for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, welcome. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hello, my name is Michael S. Battlefor from Java Junction and I'd like to recap the last meeting that we had, last meeting when we were here. I still am stuck on the fact that Public Works said they worked 52,000 hours in 123 days on that bridge. I'm not going to take too much of your time because these people seem like they have a lot of things to talk about. Also, Public Works hides behind these numbers of 700 days that the contractor has to finish. Those 700 days actually take three years, so it's actually 1,050 days that they have to complete the project. They did that before when they said the bridge would only be closed for 170, 170 days. I asked them, "Does that include weekends?" And they said, "No." So it's actually, it was eight months. My sales have been seriously affected by this, as have all the businesses in the Seabright area. Caltrans does have a provision where you can incentivize them to finish a job quicker, but you guys didn't agree to that prior, so there's no incentivization that is possible. The only incentivization you could do is to pay them overtime to finish the project quicker and use every available day during the time when they're not allowed to work in the water, when they're allowed to work in the water, and get as much work done now so that the bridge can be open to one-way traffic at least. We also heard that it was going to take an extra 70 seconds to get, of a stoplight, to get through. That's 70 seconds, it's 25 minutes for anybody to get from one side of the bridge to the next. So, also, the harbor came up, the harbor's non-economic development department, somebody at the harbor came up with this board game called Harboropoly, where people can go to the different businesses around the harbor, collect stamps. It was great. They don't have an economic development department, it was just one girl in the office. So, again, I need you guys to review 52,000 hours in 123 days, 433 hours of labor. These guys would like to use some of that labor, I bet.
Next person in line, good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Hemant Vaidya and I live very close to the Bethany Calvert Bridge and I'm here to talk about the plans to put a broad set of tile mosaics on the bridge. Due notice was not provided to the residents in the neighborhood before this site was selected. Due notice was not provided to the residents in the neighborhood before this site was selected. To be clear, I'm not talking about the funding of the overall project, I'm not talking about the selection of the artists, I'm not talking about the type of art, I'm talking about this particular site, which was selected without the knowledge of the community that is impacted by this extensive art display that will go on the bridge. Now, this newly constructed bridge has become a landmark of sorts. It's blessed with this dramatic backdrop of Monterey Bay. I look at it through my window many times a day and I can't resist spending a minute or two just looking at the tides and the waves and so on. But setting my personal views aside, I want to come back to the point that notice was not given, which would allow the local residents to provide their input on what art, if any, should go on that bridge. So I would humbly request the council to put this project on hold and to begin an outreach to canvas the local residents, who see this bridge, visit this bridge practically every day. And they are the ones who will be most impacted by the change in the look and the environment. I request you to get that back on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. City council meeting.
Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Dawson, a homeowner on Woodrow since 2009. And before I get into the topic, I want to thank you all for your tireless service to the community. I don't know how many residents really queue in to the hard work that you do, so I just want to say that many of us appreciate your advocacy and everything you do for us. I'm particularly grateful for all the support Westsiders got from the council and the staff during the two and a half grueling years of coastal repair. We watched those construction guys morning to night, working like mad, and when West Cliff reopened, it was like a cloud had lifted. We were all walking taller and feeling better and traffic was going again and it was great. Getting to the topic, just about that same time as we were celebrating the opening of West Cliff, you guys surprised us with zero notice of a plan to decorate the Bethany Bridge with mural art, applied end to end on three sides of the bridge, end to end on three sides of the bridge. Where did the idea come from? When the site was selected, how was it selected? Noticed, disgust, and approved? I was a little shocked to see that it went through, it just glided through on the consent calendar back in June, the approval of the contract, and it went through as a priority project for the city. Certainly, West Cliff and the bridge were priorities, but a mural art project is being pushed as a priority to complete by the city. So I ask that you please pause the Arts Commission pushed mosaic program until you can verify that the neighborhood has had proper notice and an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not this is an appropriate site for this large splashy project. Let the bridge speak for itself, let the view speak for itself, please don't gild the lily. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak and my name is Dorinda Parker and we have owned a home on Woodrow since 1995. We're requesting that the city council suspend the mosaic mural project at Bethany Curve Bridge to provide notice to our community and to gather community feedback as to whether the Bethany Curve Bridge is an appropriate site for a large tile mural installation. We understand one reason for putting the murals at Bethany Curve is graffiti abatement, which is important. We have a neighbor who has experience with graffiti on a building she manages and she has provided the information on a graffiti resistant coating that she uses very effectively that can be applied to a surface like the bridge where water and a mop can remove the graffiti easily. No chemicals needed. Quick and easy removal of graffiti is the key to keeping our area safe. Removal is easily done once this graffiti resistant coating is applied and cost for the coating for the bridge area would be less than $10,000 versus the $200,000 that would be spent for the mural, which may or may not be a graffiti, you know, abatement thing. So this graffiti resistant coating is something that really should be looked into as a possibility. Now, more than ever, our community needs peaceful areas without distracting images and messages, keeping minds constantly moving. West Cliff Drive at Bethany Curve is a peaceful area, unique in its 180-degree views of nature. We need this perspective from nature, especially now. What legacy are we going to leave for the next generation at the Bethany Curve Bridge? Let's leave a legacy where members of our community can view nature and faraway views out into the Monterey Bay without distraction from colorful images and messages.
My name is Jean Crawford and I'll apologize ahead of time for being a bit redundant because I'm here with the same points to be made, except to say that my reading of the local coastal program is that on notice, public hearings with advance notice, the community is required, and in particular, a mailed notice to residents that live within 100 to 300 feet of the proposed project. I reside within that proximity and did not receive such notice and with checking with my immediate neighbors confirmed that they had not received notice of the project as well. Importantly, we did a survey of the neighbors within several blocks of this proposed project and that survey was of 100 residents who, to a person, said, "We didn't receive notice, we were unaware of this project." We request, as already has been requested, I too request, that the council direct that this matter be placed on its next regularly convened meeting, its agenda for that meeting, and that in the interim, the project be suspended and that a final local action notice not be forwarded to the Coastal Commission until there's a determination by this body that the required notice requirement has been satisfied. Finally, we request that the council direct that a written report of its findings be made available to any member of the community that submits a written request for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. Pardon my ignorance. I've sort of delved into politics as of lately, and this is sort of the first time I've ever spoken to any one of you. But I'm an active duty military officer with the Navy, and I'm back temporarily. So I'm not a citizen anymore of Santa Cruz. But primarily, the reason for me for leaving, as many people have already discussed, was that, you know, just outpriced, right? And, you know, I used to work over in the valley and we used to stay as a kid, you know, valley go home, right? You know, became an engineer, did that whole thing, you know, was living in an apartment, could afford it. But my dreams of wanting to go home, you know, year after year, it kept getting diminished. And when I came back, you know, first thing I wanted to do is go down to downtown Pacific Avenue, see what's going on. And when I come back, it seems that more stores are closing. And I know with Prop 13 in California, I know there's not that many incentives for, you know, realtors to sort of open up those vacancies and look for, you know, people to sort of start businesses there. But it had me thinking, you know, there was a good book that I was reading, The Future is Analog by David Zax, and he was talking about how there are cities that are pedestrian friendly, where they sort of get rid of these roads that sort of prevent people from connecting with one another. I think Pacific Avenue, you know, that road specifically, while it's been there for many ages, you know, way back when with the Pacific Garden Mall, right? You know, back in the sixties and eighties. But I think if that road was sort of turned into like a pedestrian plaza where people can just walk around, skate or bike or whatever, and have that area open for restaurants, so they could put out tables, because people like to dine out. People here in Santa Cruz, they love to go outside. I know I do. I like to walk to the beach every time I get, you know, I get the opportunity to do so. Actually, when I came back, the first thing I did was just go to the beach and just lay down after I finished my military training, you know, after all the stress and trauma I dealt with over there. That's just all I really needed. And I think for most people in town, having something like that, you know, projects started like that in downtown, which I know that was something that was talked about, I think, last year, I think would go a long way. But, you know, it's an honor serving you guys, and I'm just hoping that Santa Cruz has a brighter future. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Kozlak. I am an administrative assistant for the City of Santa Cruz Water Department. I'm here to just echo the concerns of my SEIU 521 members. I have lived and worked in this town for over 20 years. I have a bachelor's degree in Spanish. I have a master's degree. I am barely making over $25 an hour in my current role. My partner works for the City of Santa Cruz as well. He works a second job so we can afford to pay our rent. He works 16 hours, two days of the week, all day, just to be able to pay our bills. Additionally, we have a roommate because we cannot afford to rent in Santa Cruz without an additional person. I would like to especially echo the concerns of our library workers who are facing emotional, physical, lack of safety and violence in their roles. And I think that any one of you should go and try to work an eight-hour shift at the downtown library and then go back to negotiating. Thank you.
Hi, folks. My name is Patrice Boile. I think some of you have met me before. I'm from the West Side, but I have a restaurant on Midtown. What this woman just talked about, struggling to, to pay the rent, my, the people who work for me struggle to pay rent. And tips are a really important part of what their income is. And when we are not busy, they do not make tips. They all struggle. So with the city closing the bridge and kind of creating sort of a no man's land in Lower Seabright, we're, I'm very concerned. So we had a meeting on the 12th, and there was a motion to take action. There was a meeting on the 26th with an update on the actions. And I know there's an ad hoc committee. I we have asked that some other people can be on it so that someone can give us regular updates about what's happening. But that's not going to, I guess that's not allowed. I, we haven't, I did get an email from Sonia, let's see, on the 27th, which was after the meeting last, on the 26th. And I get it, got an update from a generalized email to everybody from Rebecca on the 9th, or on the, on the 2nd, 9-2. So I'm just wondering what the communication is supposed to be like, that we're supposed to be getting from the antahoc committee. And I'd like to know who's actually on it. Thanks very much. And if you have an extra $200,000 from that bridge, I know where you can spend it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. You're welcome.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Melissa Huggins, and I'm here with the SEIU. Sorry if I'm nervous. It's my first time ever speaking in council. And there's ants on your desk. Anyway, I am here today to express some of the concerns that the SEIU brought up. Due to the comparables that they laid out, my position is 33% underpaid. A little bit about what I do, I pay all of the invoices for the water department. That is water production, water distribution, watershed, water recreation, and water quality, all we can, I think, can agree are very important to the city. When I started my position, construction damage reports hadn't been done for two and a half years. If they're not done at the three-year mark, the city does not get paid for this. I personally have made the city $35,000 on these construction damage reports. I think I do my job really well. I would really like to live in the city where I work. I would like to be able to afford living here. I would like my family to continue living here. My husband is a tenured teacher in Watsonville. We've been here for 11 years. And it's really hard. And I think sometimes the salary that you guys make leaves you guys to where you don't see how hard we are struggling. To offer us two to three percent of a raise when I am 33% underpaid is such a slap in the face. Please don't do that. Please let us live in the city where we work. Please pay us appropriate wages. I love my job. I love my coworkers. I love the water department. I love my city. I donate time. I donate effort. I ran a craft company. I donated to at-risk youth kids. Like, I care so much about this community. When SE, and when the SEU fires happened, my house became a personal zone where people could come bring their items and I could keep them safe. I love people here. I want to live here. I want to work here. But I do need to be paid. So please, when you guys bring your negotiations back to the union, please keep them comparable with what we've presented. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? Oral communication? Anybody else online? We are on item five. This is a mayor proclamation declaring September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The vice mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone here to accept this? Hey, please step up. I'll be reading this proclamation, and then I'll come up and you can say a few words. Whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable. And whereas each year, 19.2 in every 100,000 children in our community will be diagnosed with cancer. And whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children, more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibrosis, congenital anomalies, and AIDS combined. Whereas Jacobs Heart, whereas Jacobs Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed, and emotionally supported by steadfastly adhering to the following commitments. Parents of children with cancer and other serious illnesses will be relieved of financial fears and able to focus their attention on their children. No child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after the pandemic. And no seriously ill children in our community, child in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of a lack of transportation. I'm going to skip down a little further. Whereas Jacobs Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services holds the memories and honors the legacies of hundreds of children from our local community who have been lost to cancer, ensuring that their memories will never be forgotten. Whereas it's important for all Santa Cruz city residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor their children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now, therefore, I, Shepard Calentari Johnson, Vice Mayor of the City of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Santa Cruz, and encourage all citizens to join me in honoring Jacobs Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services for its 27 years of outstanding support to our community and acknowledging its contributions to Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you so much for the incredible work that you do in the community. I've had experience working with Jacobs Heart in my capacity as a grant writer, and your work is invaluable. Thank you so much.
Two words that I want to say. Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly. And on behalf of Jacobs Heart Children's Cancer Support Services, we do want to thank Santa Cruz for recognizing Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Every day, 47 children are diagnosed with cancer. This proclamation honors those in treatment, the survivors, and those children that we've lost. By making this proclamation, Santa Cruz shows families that they are not alone and that the community stands beside them. Thank you for your compassion and your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Best wishes to you. Thanks for everything you do in the community. We're on item number six, National Emergency Preparedness Month. The chief is here, other sparkling folks in uniforms, and we welcome you here. Chief, good to see you, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Rob Odie, Fire Chief. Thank you for the opportunity. I've come here with some of my amazing talented staff. I have with me OES manager Meredith Albert. We just want to talk to you today, remind you, and of course, the entire community about emergency preparedness. Today, or this month, is National Emergency Preparedness Month. It was established in 2004, initiated by FEMA in 2004. And we just want to take this opportunity to remind everybody, of course, as we approach October, and it's the anniversary of our earthquake, we just want to remind everybody the importance of being resilient as a household, as a neighborhood, and as a community. Some of the topics that we'll cover is, you know, being prepared and resilient for 72 hours. A lot of these disasters take a lot out of our first responders. It's difficult for us to get to everybody all at once. So the fact that people can have enough food, water, supplies, have a go bag, have enough supplies for 72 hours is paramount. We also want people to be able to receive notifications. And then another thing that Meredith will talk about is making those connections within not only your family unit, but in your neighborhood and the community as a whole. And so again, in an effort not to steal her thunder, without further ado, I would like to introduce OES manager Meredith Albert.
Ms. Albert, always good to see you. Thank you for your good work.
Oh, thank you. In the 24 years since, since September 11th, we see over and over again that the strength of our communities really depends on our ability to respond to a disaster together. One of the lasting lessons from that day for me personally was the power of resilience and the power of planning and preparedness. At the local level, this is the foundation of our community's ability to rebuild after things that we don't foresee. This month is, again, the 24th anniversary of September 11th. And I wanted to take a minute to thank you all for the support that you give to the community and to talk a little bit of it from a really big picture, high level. What are the things that our emergency management program and our public safety partners are focusing on? Oh, sweet. That's so much power. The three areas that I really want to focus on, alert and notification, or alert and warning, personal and family preparedness, and bringing it all together at the local level. The challenge of communicating the need to be personally prepared requires that we say things that sometimes are scary. And we need our community to understand that after a catastrophic earthquake, those first 72 hours, it is unlikely that you will have power, water, or access to emergency services. Now that we've said that, we can get that out of the way and start focusing on what we can do to prepare. And there's a lot. The QR code there attaches to FEMA's Ready.gov program. This was a program that was rolled out after 2000, after September 11th, three years later, and is directly tied to the understanding that our communities need to be personally resilient, resilient at the personal, household, and neighborhood level. What does 72 hours preparedness look like? Well, it looks a little different depending on who you are in our community. And I'm not going to stand here and tell you exactly how much food or water you need or what type of batteries you need to power your personal devices. But I am going to ask that we all in this room and whoever might be watching, think about it. 72 hours. So what have you got? What have your neighbors got? And have you talked to them? Shake Alert. This is maybe a little foreshadowing for next month, which is Earthquake Preparedness Month. This is one of the highest hazard risks that we know is likely to impact the City of Santa Cruz. If you don't have the Shake Alert app, I'm going to pause for about three seconds and let you look it up right now and download it. Now that we all have the Shake Alert app, we will all receive on 10:16, at 10:16 a.m., a Shake Alert. And that's going to trigger us to get under a desk, hold on, and take cover. And after that happens, we know that aftershocks are likely, right? So again, having a 72-hour plan, knowing our friends, knowing our neighbors, and knowing what we have in our house that's going to keep us safe. It's increasingly apparent that we can't rely on a single mode of communication to alert us. So we have CruzAware. It's fantastic. It's not always perfect. We have Shake Alert, which is great in an earthquake, but useless in a tsunami. We have NOAA weather radios, which are fantastic for extreme weather events. We need everyone in the city to think about multiple modes of communication. Because if you don't receive the information, you can't act. If we send the best protective action messaging in the world and we have 2% of our city registered to receive it, that's a failure. And AI agrees with me. Questions? I'm going to give one last plug. I apologize for not starting with this, but we have the Race the Wave event, an emergency preparedness fair coming up on Saturday. If you aren't already registered to run, please do plan to stop by the fair. We're going to have a collection of 19 or 20 different community-based organizations. City departments are showing up. It's going to focus on 72 hours preparedness. What are we doing? How are we talking to each other? We have scouts coming, American Red Cross, water department, et cetera, et I think I'm done.
There we go. Okay, let me see if council members have questions or comments. Council members, Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. I just wanted to share my appreciation. Really good information for the council to have. I'm excited about this weekend as well. I think as we move through our agenda topics even today, wildfire resiliency is always top of mind. And so I really appreciate you guys coming forward to the Public Safety Committee, as well as council, with just that drumbeat of emergency preparedness. So I just wanted to share my appreciation.
Can I add one more thing?
Please.
Any opportunities that you all know about for us to get in front of the community? We are more than, I am personally more than happy to come. We have NOAA weather radios to distribute. I can register people for CruzAware if they don't know how to. We have information in English and Spanish. We are ready and anxious to meet with the community, but we need your help making those connections.
Thank you so much. I think we all appreciate, Chief, we very much appreciate you, Meredith, all the work that you do getting us ready for those kinds of circumstances. And then what you do once that arrives and the way you all help us recover and respond. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. It's an honor. I will say too, as a reminder, and as the city's website gets updated and is released, a lot of this information, as well as the fire department has developed an emergency preparedness flyer for all the myriad of disasters that we face, whether it's flood, tsunami, earthquake, wildfires. It's, you can download it and print it. We recommend multiple that go in all your vehicles, in your go bag. All your family members have one. So you can get that at the fire department's website and the OES link on the city website. And of course, you can come into our admin office and we have copies as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was available and that information was out there. So thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Chief. Best wishes to all of your staff who do such a fine job for us every day. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Meredith, very much. We are on presiding officer announcements. I have none. Statements of disqualification on the balance of our agenda? No? All right. Additions or deletions? Additions or deletions?
I have none.
Okay. City Attorney Report, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The council met in closed session today in the Courtyard Conference Room at twelve thirty. First, the council discussed the liability claims of Catherine Capaldo and Gabrielle DeCock. Those items are on your open session consent agenda as item number twelve. Next, the council met with legal counsel to discuss the existing litigation, the Purdue Pharma matter in the United States Bankruptcy Court in the Southern District of New York, case number one-nine-two-three-six-nine-four-RDD. As for item number three on the closed session agenda, anticipated litigation, that item was actually not discussed today. For item number four, council met with its real property negotiator to discuss the property at ten seventy River Street, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. We are on City Council meeting calendar. Ms. Bush, anything you'd like to bring to our attention?
No updates, no.
All right, very good. Thank you. We are on the consent agenda. For those of you that might be unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up items eight through nineteen inclusive on one motion. What I will do is give the council members an opportunity to comment on, ask a question or pull an item from the consent calendar. I will then give the public the opportunity to do the same thing. I'm going to start today on my left, your right, with Councilmember Golda. Councilmember Golda, on the consent agenda. And Councilmember O'Hara, on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one comment and a couple questions for the Water Director. On item thirteen, I just wanted to express my deep appreciation for all of those that went into developing this memorial honoring former Mayor Mike Rockin. I know that we have a policy around this. I'm appreciative of his widow and those that were part of bringing this forward, and I hope this just serves as step one in memorializing Mike. He was such an incredibly important member of our community and will continue in his legacy, so I appreciate that work. And in that legacy, I do want to talk about nineteen, Financial Planning Services for Water Rates. When I made comments about Mike's passing several weeks, maybe months ago, I talked about his commitment to water supply resiliency in our community. And as a water engineer, I am aware, as many of us are, that a reliable climate-resistant water supply that stays affordable is foundational to our community's prosperity and housing and jobs future. And so this, I believe, is a very, very important item on our agenda, and I did have a question for the Water Director. Would it be possible to roll in, somehow fold in informally, a couple council members into your process that you're moving through with the commission? I know there's a very long span of time between when we start this conversation about hiring a consultant and ultimately get to recommendations on rates, and oftentimes, water policy goes unnoticed because it only gets noticed when there's crises or disasters. And so I think it would be great to capitalize on that opportunity to really keep council members close to that. So I wanted to see about your opinion on that.
Yeah, thank you for that question.
Madam Water Director, good afternoon.
Thank you, Heidi Lookemach, Water Director, and thank you for that question. It is about a two-year process, and as you know from the recent rates that came before you from the Public Works Department, there's not a lot of scheduled presence in front of the council. We do have an ad hoc committee of our Water Commissioner with three members, and I think it would be really a nice idea, a good idea, to include in some fashion council in that process. The next time you would normally see us is when we come to you with a two-eighteen notification, which could be about twelve months from now. We'd be happy to talk what that could look like. We do have a schedule of when the ad hoc committee meets and what our touchpoints are with the council and where it would make sense to come back with the two-by-two or to the full council.
Thank you, Director. Just for the pleasure of the council, I'd be very interested in joining that if that was of interest to the council, and I realize it doesn't have to be a formal appointment.
The Vice Mayor is recognized on the consent agenda.
Thank you, I'm commenting on thirteen, sixteen and seventeen. Thirteen is a memorial for former Mayor Mike Rockin, and as my colleague mentioned, I'm really happy to see this and want to acknowledge former Mayor's widow who's here with us and thank everyone who worked on this. I'm really hopeful that the council will support this and we will get a physical space where we can go and remember Mike and the work that he did to preserve that area of town. So really happy to see that. Item sixteen, Measure Q Expenditure Plan and Status Update. Thank you to our Parks and Rec team and our representative who's going to be serving on this, Rachel Dan, for your work to date on this. I'm excited to see where this goes and maybe how this grows, and happy to see the forestry, the urban forestry assistant as part of this plan. I know that's been much needed in our community. And then just in an acknowledgement and thank you for item seventeen, which is the rail trail segment seven, phase two, notice of completion. I know that was a lot of work and it's really lovely to see people using that space in District Three. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment on item number seventeen, just want to quickly say I'm really happy to see that item on our agenda and want to thank Director Quinn for his great work and his team for their work on that project, for something that will be enjoyed by our community for many years to come. And just want to pass along, I've received many positive comments by my constituents about that portion of the rail trail. So very happy that we're here and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brunner, on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick comment on item number sixteen. Appreciate and thank you to our Parks and Rec Department and reviewing the three-year plan and the open space and urban forestry aligned with the Measure Q funding priorities. So I know there is a lot that can be addressed and I'm really excited that we have that opportunity, so thank you.
Councilmember Trigaro, on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to lift item thirteen as we honor former Mayor Mike Rockin and extend a special thank you to his widow, Madeline, as well as the members of the Democratic Women's Club who have leaned in on this, which was a very special organization to Mike. I think it's also notable and in the spirit of Mike Rockin that this memorial plaque will be the first that will be bilingual in our city. And so rarely and especially we make these honors, and to have this one be bilingual, I think is special and notable and really honors Mike in that way, too. On item fourteen, I'd like to acknowledge my appreciation for the two ex officio members. This is an appointment of two ex officio members to the Sister Cities Committee. So I'd especially like to extend my thank you to Enda Brennan and Anna Maria Treadwell. I think it's exemplary that they're willing to step back in support, and I'm excited that Parks and Rec has invited them back to make the commission more and more robust in our work. On item sixteen, I want to echo the Vice Mayor's comments. This much-needed Wildlife and Habitat Protection Funds is very much needed for our open spaces, and as she mentioned, having an urban forester in the department is going to be an incredible asset. I'd like to note that while that position, we had hoped was going to be funded through a grant through the USDA in a three-year term, that got pulled back from the federal administration back, I believe in April. But with Measure Q funding, we will have an ongoing position funded. So rather than our original hope of a three-year position, the Measure Q funding allows us to have that in an ongoing capacity, and I'm very thankful, especially my residents in De La Vega and such, will be very happy to have that much-needed support. And then lastly, I'll just say for item nineteen, the water, I appreciated Councilmember O'Hara's comments, and I also would be interested in joining. I really enjoy working alongside my Water Commissioner, Justin Burks, and I'd be happy to lean in on that as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me see if there are folks who are with us in chambers today who would like to comment on the consent agenda. This would be your opportunity to do so.
Yeah, hello, I need to comment on four items on the consent agenda. Number eight, the minutes, and on there, number fifteen and sixteen. Also on number eight, the minutes, very often during presentations, the public is not given time to make comments. At least the two members that spoke about the safety preparedness stuff invited the public to contact them, but I think it'd be great if we could make comments. And then on the regular agenda, number seventeen and eighteen. Eighteen being about the water, which you guys took a loan out of up to one hundred and twenty-five million from the Environmental Protection Agency Bank. Pretty odd, that's a one billion dollar investment, that's quite the cash cow. Back to the minutes of the previous meeting, number fifteen and sixteen, you just railroaded that through, where number fifteen, first reading of ordinance to amend municipal code, chapter twenty-four point oh, four point one, six zero, to extend active life of commercial permits from the calendar year two thousand nineteen through January twenty thirty. Very similar to what got railroaded through a couple days before in the afternoon in the supervisors' meeting where they went over their agenda, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, and then two thousand twenty-four to two thousand thirty-two, where those individuals spent over a half an hour and didn't like sum it up. Hey, we perceived we were successful with eighty-five percent of our objectives. There were four hundred and sixty-nine different objectives. I find you guys really experts at the Delphi technique and at the Hegelian dialectic, the way this circle is run. People plead to you like you can actually do anything because your hands are tied because you're controlled by the city manager that constantly leaves the room when I talk, I'll leave it at that. Moving on to number eighteen, excuse me, from the minutes last month, number sixteen. Amendments to Title eighteen of the municipal code to align the emergency reach code for major renovations and additions to existing single-family homes with the two thousand twenty-five California Energy Code cycle. You guys are electrifying everything. If there were some kind of a disaster, and the power's off, you don't have gas backup that's already pumped to your house, you're at a huge disadvantage. And I'll say that it's seventy-two hours is nothing. If we have some kind of major crisis, people should really be thinking seventy-two days because if you can do seventy-two hours, you can do seventy-two days. So I suppose that's enough for now. It's interesting that the city manager always leaves the room when I talk, I wonder why.
And good afternoon. It is wonderful to see you.
Thank you.
We send all of our very best wishes to you. We look forward to seeing you next week also.
I hope you'll all be there. I want to thank you for your kind words about Mike. I want to express appreciation for Parks Director Tony Elliott's help, Blake Wolseley, Mike Murray, Gerald Chavez, my daughter, Carol Fuller, Peggy Flynn, and others who will be at the celebration of Mike's life on Wednesday and help, you know, keep control. Fred Keely, who will be there, too. And just thank you for preserving the legacy of this transformative council member and kind, generous, wonderful man. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on the consent agenda? Matters back before the body.
I do have someone online.
We'll take the person online. Good afternoon, person online.
Yeah, hello, this is Garrett again. Hey, item nineteen is where the city's slush fund antics go to get funded and then buried. We talked before about the ethical principle of not using monopoly utility bill payments here, a charge per CCF of water use or loans guaranteed by such income on or for anything not related to the actual delivery of water. I get the feeling when you want to spend money, you look around for fund balances with a ton of money sloshing around in them, not tied to the general fund, which I think you regard as your money, not the taxpayers', that can be refilled essentially without the public's consent by rate increases. It's really simple. Spend the money. Having filled up a fund before it is needed, in this case with ever more expensive borrowed money on whatever, then get accountants to adjust rates upward to cover the shortfall. Any lame excuse will do such as art about water. We may have a principle on the council, but overall, no fiduciary principles. You even created a water fund one percent for art to make it look legit, this time used on the Water Department unrelated Bethany Curve Culver. Please ask the city attorney and this consultant about the legal appropriateness and the ethical appropriateness of these transfers. As to the non-competitive agreement, I'm not sure I see what the rush is. Surely, you knew this would be happening every five years, and it's only an assumption this firm will somehow do better for cheaper than other firms as you didn't actually seek any other bids. While I like the idea of third parties checking the accounting for our own finance department, seems to share the same slush fund principles or lack thereof as the cities, using the same one over and over without bidding, to me reminds me that consultants tend to give their employers what they want, whatever that is, and not necessarily in the interest of ratepayers. Doesn't it cost nothing to get other bids? I recall, if the interest rate financing were at favorable rates already achieved, the total extra cost over forty years would still be around six hundred million, about half interest, and while I have no idea how many ratepayers there are, I'm just going to assume here thirty thousand parcels, it'd be an average increase of five hundred a year. I got shocked when the sewer rate increases were announced. I can hardly wait for the water shock treatment. For fun, as usual, I compare this to Huntington Beach's water rates, which they already adjusted last year, and I see an SFR house three-quarter inch pipe using nine CCF, which is a lot of water, only has a total monthly charge of forty-eight dollars. For five CCF, it's only thirty-seven dollars. My current water bill for five CCF was a hundred and four before these probably large increases. It's different, huh? Like three times as much already. How do they make Santa Cruz look light-poppingly expensive over and over in every way possible? Could it be the management? You think? Wowee. Anyway, hardly wait. Thanks.
Anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello, thank you, Council. This is Bradley Snyder. Once more, I wanted to thank you for item fifteen. I hope it hasn't been pulled, I wasn't here earlier when the consent agenda, items that are on the consent agenda are, were defined. The thing I liked about it is, as I mentioned at a prior meeting, above campus, above UCSC's campus, there are many trails with a really huge volume of fuel, of dead wood. That's really, really something that the city should carefully consider trying to bring to heel. Get it cleared, get it collected, get it taken out of there. Maybe the safest thing would be to actually have teams go in and drag it out, just like you would, you know, the Sheriff's Department would hire temporaries to go in and help them clean up encampments in the Pogonip, the Lower Pogonip or, you know, various places. You know, it is a big hazard. We went through the CZU five years ago. There have been the state's two largest, most destructive wildfires earlier this year, the Eaton Fire and the Palisades Fire. You know, it's a good time to think about it. Thanks very much.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else online? Last call. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Golda moves, and Councilmember Trigaro seconds, moving the consent agenda. Debate or discussion, seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We're on items twenty-one and twenty-two. This is the consent public hearing. We will be holding both of these items. We'll conduct public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Let me see if there are questions or comments by members. Seeing hearing none, council is now, we are out at a public hearing. Do we have anyone online? We'll take the person online on items twenty and twenty-one.
Okay, yeah, this is Garrett again. I think this is twenty. Anyway, the base premise of that is that somehow in Anyway, the base premise of that is that somehow enacting zero emission type efforts here is going to make more than squat difference to our human existence based on the fear-mongering of an existential threat to humanity posed by CO2, which is locally a whopper of a tail in Santa Cruz, that we could make any measurable provable difference to climate change whatsoever. You know, while a future cost benefit is prohibited for almost every idea contained herein in this agenda item, and you should know it, but astoundingly don't seem to. It will, though, in parts, continue to decimate the middle lower classes and make housing and living more expensive for most all people, as is your wont to do. You drag out the same old easily discredited studies of self-interested utilities, as if telling a lie over and over makes it true. You just don't know what the future cost of energy is, and you're just making it up, or they're making it up. Anyway, the, and that's the basis of the regulations. The future cost benefit ratio cannot be easily calculated then from any of your ideas. It might seem a minor point to you, but a universal truth is every single regulation put forward is making everything that people do illegal, and creates friction in the system and in human activity, and sure reduces human freedom and at great cost. There is no limit to the control you want to exert on people's lives. While I don't like repeating over and over the obvious defects of these types of ordinances, you must realize they require changes to other parts of existing buildings beyond the remodel or additional area, which you choose to be a very small area, which is in basic conflict with the American idea of something existed and was permitted in the past, it should still be legal, but you're deciding not to make it so. You know, and it's, well, I'm going to skip over some stuff here. Let's see. It seems like many of the changes here are because the original ordinance that you came up with contained defects you couldn't ignore, like they were illegal, you know, like basing it on, like basing eliminating gas on, well, it's just not legal to eliminate a source of energy unless you can prove it's cheaper, and I don't think you've really done that. And as always, many aspects of climate change, as existential threat hoax, as well as the salaries of those promoting such, could be discontinued and save us taxpayers a lot of money and loss of freedom. I would love to hear the proposed total mandated public outlay added to the current government outlay of all that this is contemplated being spent on climate action as to what we'll have to show for it. Anytime is good for me, then recall CO2 is plant food. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Take the person in line. Good afternoon.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you. It's nice to be here. We're commenting on number twenty and twenty-one, which I actually don't think we're right into the record. This is twenty, second reading and final adoption of ordinance number two zero two five dash eighteen, dot, 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 to amend the municipal code two four oh four point one six zero, to extend the life from two thousand nineteen to two thousand thirty. And then on twenty-one, I didn't read the whole thing. Second reading and final adoption ordinance, which has to do with the energy compliance, the agenda twenty-one genocide agendas. So commenting on twenty, I'm just going to read this because I think it sums up quite a bit, and it's quite broad, and it certainly, if this is anything like what went through. In the county, they had four hundred and sixty-nine different written objectives, which they said they were eighty-five percent completed, so I'm going to read this. I think the vaccine issue is a psyop. Not that vaccines are terrible, but the vaccine issue is being used as a psyop to get us focused on just that, rather than recognizing that we were all being bombarded with nanotech, via chemtrails, food, water, personal products, et cetera. So there is no such thing as a pure blood anymore. So now that they've got all of us fighting and divided, and that is the metocratic system, also the Delphi technique, and the Hegelian dialectic, let me continue with this. So now that we, they've got us all fighting and divided, and rather than realizing who are the actual enemies in the room and who are actually supporting the people. They think they're going to make vaccines non-mandatory, at least in the U.S., and level-one truthers are going to celebrate and think we won, and JFK is a hero, and all that crap. But in the meantime, the newest vaccines are officially, quote, "self-amplifying," unquote, in parentheses, meaning whatever is in them spreads from the people who took it to everybody else in the room. And we are still being sprayed, and we're still being zapped with frequencies. So the nano-networks are still growing in our bodies, and the agenda can continue regardless of whether or not we get vaccinated. Making vaccines voluntary is meaningless unless the spraying stops and they stop putting shit in our food and water. They make vaccines mandatory. Don't say it's a start. It's not a start. It's a bait and switch. We have some serious issues going on, and when the poop hits the fan, I'm really glad that the emergency responders in here were asking for public support. I'm just here because I care. I don't think I'm making many friends in this room. Thank you.
Anyone else? Matters back before the body. Public hearing is closed. Matters back before the body. Pleasure of the body. Items twenty and twenty-one are moved by Councilmember Golda, seconded by Councilmember Newsom. Debate or discussion, seeing hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. We are on item twenty-three. This item relates to the San Lorenzo River Park redesign final report. There are various, I'm sorry, excuse me. Oh, excuse me. I want to just move so fast here. I'm moving too fast here. Bear with me. Thank you for your forbearance, and thank you for correcting me on that. Let me get back to the rest of my agenda here. We are on twenty-two. Thank you. There we go. This is a resolution of intention to establish the Midtown Santa Cruz Business Improvement District in districts one and two. Forgive me for jumping over that item. Ms. Unit, always good to see you.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Rebecca Unit, Economic Development Manager. I'm really excited to bring this item to you this afternoon. This is our first step of the process of potentially forming a business improvement district for the Midtown Business Corridor. So in January of twenty, January twenty-third of two thousand twenty-four, the council directed us to initiate this process and hire a consultant firm to bring this forward. So we've engaged the firm Kristen Lowell Inc., as well as Community Strong Strategies and Civitas Advisors. Kristen is here with us this afternoon. And I also want to really thank my colleague Katie Ferraro on our team, who's been side by side with me as we go through this process and is our point person for the Midtown area. So what is a business district? So business improvement district, so these are organizations that are formed for a specific commercial corridor. They are the business owners assessing themselves to provide services above and beyond what the city provides. These are typically formed under the nineteen eighty-nine law. We have some existing districts like this in our community. The Downtown Association and the Downtown Management Corporation are both under this law. So as I mentioned, these bids are formed to supplement city services, so providing above and beyond what we are able to offer. They're focused on a defined area, and this is an assessment that business owners are electing to take on themselves. They are self-managed by the businesses, so there is a board that is formed and a nonprofit organization that manages these funds and delivers the services to their ratepayers. So when we initially started this process with our consultant team, we were looking at potentially forming a property-based improvement district. These are assessments that are placed on property owners. They're charged through the property tax bill. These can be stable mechanisms because property doesn't change as much as businesses do, so we started down this path to see if there was that feasibility for the structure. We formed a steering committee to work with us and get feedback and provide sort of the shape and form that they wanted for this group. We conducted online surveys, did a couple of workshops to sort of present this concept globally to property owners as well as business owners, and we had really great attendance from a lot of business owners and not as much attendance from property owners in that sort of engagement process. But we wanted to, you know, carry this through and see if we could do it, so we came back with another set of workshops to do some additional outreach to check viability, and so that was held in November. Following those workshops, we determined there wasn't as much support for that property-based model, so we decided to switch towards bid feasibility and really re-engaging with the business group, who were sort of the impetus of this process from the start. There's been a Midtown Business Association that's been operating, sort of ad hoc and formally, self-funding themselves already with some shared initiatives, and so really going back to that base of where they were looking for that support. So we sort of modified our steering committee to bring it back to that business base, held a number of meetings with them to sort of look at how we would want to reshape this into that process. In April of this year, we carried out some business walks to meet with the different businesses within the area that we were looking at, able to contact forty-nine businesses, and also did a follow-up survey with those businesses. And then just recently, in August, we completed two additional workshops to do some additional outreach to those businesses and share the proposal that we're reviewing today. So this is our first step of our formation process with the resolution of intention. There will be two additional council meetings, public meetings and a public hearing where this will go forward, and we're doing additional noticing to businesses as we get through this process. So to dive into what this looks like, this is our map of our service area, so it's largely focused around SoCal Avenue between North Bransia Forty and Morrissey Avenue with the terminus Pacheco on the west side, and then it's also bounded on the north of Water. What we heard from our businesses in terms of activities that they were really interested in being able to fund with this initiative is looking at more events and activations, place-making, branding of the district, looking at potentially funding some banners to be really defined those corridors, looking at sort of above and beyond maintenance of the public realm, pressure washing, additional cleaning services, potentially some security resources, capital improvements such as trashcans, benches, additional lighting to really enhance the pedestrian experience in the Midtown area. So with that feedback, we worked with Kristen, our engineer, to craft a budget for the group. So we're looking at this first-year budget at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we've broken it down into these different categories, so looking at one hundred and twenty-five thousand for beautiful, clean, and safe services, one hundred thousand for marketing branding and special events, and then twenty-five thousand for management and administration. We're also, you know, this group will need to have an executive director of some sort, so looking at how we can share some of the helpful marketing expertise we could find in a director, with also that sort of potential for a part-time management type of role. So these districts are funded through assessments, which typically have formulas that are based on square footage of a business, type of a business, and there's different calculations based on how, you know, how your business fits into the draw of that district. So this formula is basically very similar to how our Downtown Association formula is structured. We have it broken down into four different types of businesses, and then there is a scale of sort of that percentage that you pay into it. So the base fee, the base rate per square foot, and then the base fee. So the base fee is important because some businesses share space with others, so if they don't have square footage of their own space, let's say a hairstylist, you know, some personal services of that manner, we still are able to capture their assessment in that group. So for the assessment collection and bid management, as I mentioned, this would have an advisory board that would be made up of business owners from the district. And the council does appoint this. Typically, we look to the steering committee as sort of those initial members and potentially add in a few others, just that they've been involved in this throughout the process, so we'll go through that as we get into the later meetings. The city does collect this assessment on behalf of the organization, and we pass through it, those funds entirely, and typically we do this in fifty percent installments. So with this bid, we're looking at January first and July first. And then they are one-year term, and they can be renewed every year, so this one would run through January one to December thirty-one. So where we are at in the process, so today we're here for the resolution of intention to form the district. We will be mailing notices to all the businesses after this with that notice of the public meeting and hearing in November eighteenth, and we'll be publishing this resolution in the newspaper. Following this, we will go to another public meeting on October twenty-eighth to really start that process, and then, or, excuse me, October twenty-fifth, yes, and then November eighteenth, we'll have the public hearing and final adoption, and then in January, they would start operations. This is a protest hearing process, so businesses can protest this assessment, and if we receive up to fifty percent of the assessment value in protests, then we would not be able to move forward in this process. Sorry, that's a wall of text, but that's the detail. And so we have for you today a recommendation for a motion to adopt a resolution of intention to establish the Midtown Santa Cruz Business Improvement District and levy assessments per calendar year two thousand twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Unit. Let me see if there are questions by members. Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca. I really appreciate the presentation. I do have a couple of questions. As it relates to the boundaries, maybe you could pull up that slide. I was kind of curious how we landed on the intersection of Water and Seabright versus going all the way down to Bransia Forty. I realize that there are mixed number of businesses, maybe even some that are, there are no businesses in those storefrontage areas, but with all of the redevelopment happening on Water Street, I wonder what the consideration is with that boundary.
Absolutely. Great question. Let me pull this up. So we, I can just speak to it. So there are a number of new development projects that are proposed in that area, and a lot of those buildings are currently vacant, so there's not a lot of business activity. So in this current period, we look to activate sort of the more active business portion of Water Street at this point. In the future, we could certainly expand that boundary and be able to incorporate those going forward.
Okay, I see. Just to confirm, what businesses are included on the north side of Water and Seabright?
Yes.
Well, I was just kind of curious because it's hard to tell. Is that include this?
To give you some boundaries. So, yeah, so the large parcel that you see at the corner of Morrissey and Water Street is the Safeway Grocery Store across.
No, Seabright and Water.
Oh, sorry, Seabright and Water.
Yeah, so there's Tacos Morenos, and then it's Butterfly Aesthetics and the...
There's a few mixed offices. There's a sushi restaurant. There's, yeah, there's some like smaller.
Okay, so they are included?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
No, that's okay. I had a question about the distribution as well. If you could go to that slide, the, I was curious about, so is this, sorry, the one, the next slide, I think. Yes, this one. These four types are modeled directly after the Downtown Association, or are they different?
They are different. We broke out a little bit differently, so grocery stores, you know, we don't have, we do have in the downtown, we don't have them in this type three specifically because there's a larger concentration of large grocery stores in this area. We added them to the type three. Type four is the same as downtown with the nonprofit and theaters.
Okay. I guess just what's coming to mind for me is type two, financial and bars. Is that, is it safe to assume we're talking about banks and bars, and why are they in the same category?
That's a great question. I might defer to our engineer if she has any. These formulas are a serious math problem.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. Kristen Lowell from Kristen Lowell Inc. Yeah, that's a valid question, and it has all to do with pedestrian traffic generation and the kinds of hours in which they have. So the bars are more focused times the evening time, and yet they have a lot of traffic at the evening, whereas the financial, they have traffic throughout the day, so their business hours are a little bit different, but they have the same type of pedestrian traffic during the hours in which they are open. So the lodging in the bars are a little bit different, like retail food in bars are a little bit different. Retail is open, and they have a lot of pedestrian traffic during the day. Food is open most of the day, where bars are typically open later at night.
That makes perfect sense, and I have no basis for making this assumption for that particular area. It's, I'm hard-pressed to think about the banks there having the same level of impact as the bars, and so if that becomes a place of friction, I think it would be worth having conversation about whether they should be both at seventy-five percent.
Yeah, and that's valid, and the way we come up with these is within the business license itself, they've been allocated to certain business types, so there is an opportunity when new businesses come online or on an annual review to make sure that all the businesses are falling within the categories. the categories.
Thank you.
Further questions by council members? Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you so much for the work on this. It's great to see it brought forward. Just one question. The DMC has council member representatives. Will this also have council representatives or just the businesses?
You would just have the businesses for this one. Yeah, with the Downtown Management Corporation, it's assessed on property owners, but it's under the bid structure, which is why we have that different dynamic.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Further questions, comments by members? This will be the opportunity for anyone who wishes to make comment on this item, do so.
Mayor Keely, council members, good afternoon. My name is Kay Tolini. I'm speaking here today representing the Diversity Center of Santa Cruz as a member of the Board of Directors for Safety and Community Outreach and as a homeowner and resident within the defined Midtown Business Improvement District area. A year and a half ago, I made both geographical and literal transition as a new resident of the city of Santa Cruz. Having never lived in the area before, I became intimately aware of the wonderful neighborhood and business district within walking distance of my home, known to some as Midtown. Midtown, I love the sound of that name, as I met many new people, cultivated new friendships. Often I would be asked where I lived. I promptly replied, "I live in Midtown." And the response often received even by some Santa Cruz locals was, "Where's Midtown?" As I began to shop and frequent many local businesses and started to meet many local business owners, I had to wonder, "Why isn't this unique and iconic part of Santa Cruz doing better?" I listened to my new business and property owner friends' struggles and hopes for Midtown, and I thought, "What can I do? And then what can we do about it?" As part of my duties with the Diversity Center, I helped organize our Diversity Center Midtown Business Association Safety and Security Working Group to address these issues. At the same time, the Santa Cruz BID initiative was taking shape and holding meetings. These two efforts have become synergistic elements of a greater effort to revitalize the Santa Cruz Midtown Business District to its historical significance and as a go-to destination for both locals and visitors. As part of my community working group efforts, I was also invited into the Santa Cruz BID Steering Committee. Now I could observe a broader and more formalized collective of the voices of Midtown business owners, and in both groups, we began to identify and partner with key elements of Santa Cruz City Services and community support organizations. From my early hopes and wishes for the Midtown area and my neighborhood, I could finally see a way forward where businesses pooled their collective efforts for betterment of not only their individual businesses, but the greater community, and in this process, recognizing the goals of value creation and our shared humanity. My desire, my endorsement to my city and my neighbors to see the Santa Cruz Business Improvement District Initiative move forward and complete the process of approval. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? If we have anybody online, we'll take a person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, Council. Bradley Snyder. I just, this is kind of just a semantic thing that illustrates kind of a historical name for this area. For the most part, locals, people that grew up here, people who were raised in Santa Cruz, have always prior, priorly referred to the area as Seabright, the Seabright Neighborhood, and Seabright and Morrissey, just naming it by its cross streets. And for me, it's off-putting, and I think it is for a lot of people, and it's a bit of a litmus test for people who've been here long enough to really find or take issue with the idea of it being the center of any town. You know, maybe it allays fears that people call certain areas the west side and certain areas the east side, and that might portend, you know, territorial things that, you know, happen in larger cities in the state. But for me, I mean, it's not deeply disturbing, but as I said, it's just nearly a semantic issue where the name Midtown is very confusing to those of us who were raised here, who grew up here, who, you know, for, in my case, you know, first started out in the SoCal Capitola region and then spent, you know, I've really spent half my life living in the city of Santa Cruz itself. And I've, I went three decades of my life never hearing the name Midtown, Santa Cruz, and, you know, and to some extent, I still don't call it that because it doesn't seem like a reasonable name for it. And I don't know, I know that's just countervailing, it seems to countervail the immediately prior speaker, but no, it's more of an issue, a long-term issue of people, you know, kind of delineating, you know, parts of Santa Cruz as if it were a cake that they were going to section up, and I really do find it a little bit off-putting. Thank you very much.
Anyone else online? We'll take the person who's with us in chambers, and then we will hear the person online. Good afternoon.
Yeah, my name is James Huling. Women, I stayed for some reason, so I'm going to comment on this, number 22, resolution of intention to establish the Midtown Santa Cruz Business Improvement District. I'm glad somebody asked. I was able to take a picture of that map. Quite an interesting area. I am not quite so sure if this group is asking for an allocation of $250,000 or trying to establish a way to initially tax those businesses to get that. There was some commentary in the room that, about type two, why were financial and bars included together with the 75%? What are the only businesses that are really dealing with money? Everybody else is losing their ass. So, I don't know. I'd like to know if this is coming out of the city's funding, or if this is a tax structure specifically for that area. That's enough, I'll be brief. Thank you very much.
Ms. Unit, there was a question asked. Would you respond to that question, please? Thank you.
Yeah, this is an assessment on business owners, so they would be electing to assess themselves. This is not the city providing this funding.
Thank you, Ms. Unit. Anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, and thank you for having me. My name is Sonia McMoran, and I own Homework on SoCal and Cayuga in Midtown. I strongly support this resolution and the creation of a Midtown Business Improvement District. I've worked over the past nine years to help organize Midtown businesses, businesses like myself, to help support businesses and the community. What I've learned over the past nine years is that this individualized activity is just not sustainable. We need a more organized formation to help us create a neighborhood that folks want to come and spend time in. I also see huge benefit that a recognized organization like this can have with a stronger and more unified voice when working with the city. Homework was downtown for its first year and a half, and was part of the Downtown Association, and I saw the numerous ways a bid could help support both businesses and the neighborhood. Since I have a little bit of time, I do want to address this Midtown issue. Midtown is a micro-neighborhood within the East Side community. Seabright is another micro-neighborhood on Seabright closer to Murray Street. Midtown, I think, was created, the word was created in order to delineate this very small section of the East Side area so that we could describe to people where we were and not confuse them about where we were within the Santa Cruz boundaries. I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else online? Take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Diane, and I am the owner of a childish toy shop. I currently have two locations, one in Midtown and one in downtown. I'm here to express the support of creating a Midtown bid. We've worked hard over the several years, like Sonia said, and we're excited to finally see this coming on to you all, to the city. And I want to emphasize the investment that the city has made is really important to our community. As a business owner that also serves on the Business Downtown Board, I've seen firsthand how bid and P-bid can benefit the district. The down, in downtown, I've seen the improvements of safety, beautification, and community engagement, which, which also has successfully brought events and people together. And I've seen both traffic coming to the area, sales, and all small businesses like mine have benefited from that. Midtown has a potential to do that, and a bid would help thrive Midtown area in the same way. I fully support the Midtown bid and appreciate your time and commitment to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online? Anyone else in chambers? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
I'd like to move item 22, resolution of intent to establish the Midtown Santa Cruz Business Improvement District.
Second by Councilmember Trigero. You may open on your motion.
Thank you. I think we've heard from some of the businesses represented here today. I've worked myself in the past, over the past few years with this group of businesses, and I think this is really an exciting opportunity for them to leverage and work together to really create a community of businesses as a destination. And they've really accomplished a lot and built really strong relationships, and I'd just like to also thank the City Economic Development Department for the time in supporting the businesses and the district in this process. It's quite a process, and I'm happy to support.
For the debate or discussion. Seeing, hearing none, but we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Trigero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari-Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and so ordered. Now, now we are on item 23, San Lorenzo Park Redesign Final Report. There are various documents included. Boy, are there various documents included. I will tell you that there are three folks who made requests in a timely manner to get extra time, so when we get to the part where the public is going to be testifying, Lori Egan, Barbara Riverwoman, and Linda Marin will each get five minutes each. But at this time, we are going to hear from Mr. Downing. Mr. Downing, good afternoon and welcome. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We got Parks people everywhere.
Yeah, sorry to startle you there, Mayor Keely.
Quite all right, sir.
Mike Godsy, Superintendent of Parks, thank you so much for having us today, Mayor Keely, Councilmember. Really pleased to be here today to share the San Lorenzo Park redevelopment final report. It's a very, very robust package, and we're just thrilled to be here today. And I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our senior park planner, Mr. Noah Downing, for his professional leadership and really stewarding this project over the last two-plus years and getting us here today. I wanted to thank the community for just the tremendous feedback and differing perspectives we got in kind of getting to this point today, as well as the council as well. Thank you so much for the guidance and the process. So I'd like to pass it on to Mr. Downing, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Appreciate that, Mike. Good afternoon, Mayor Keely, city council members. We're pleased to present the final report to you tonight. Terms of the agenda, just hoping to briefly go through the planning context, the public engagement process, discuss what's in the final report, and then include with our staff recommendation. Terms of the planning context, just some key points. San Lorenzo Park is designated in the general plan as a community park. It's intended to serve the entire community and offer unique facilities. It's centrally located. We consider it a downtown park. As downtown grows and there's more development on Ocean Street, there'll be more of a need for that open space. In terms of the park itself, it's, we have two areas that we've described. One is the uplands, that's where you see like the playground, lawn bowling, the duck pond. That area, it's a lot of outdated infrastructure. It was constructed in 1964. It has existing facilities. They do receive some use, but as we've heard from past surveys, as well as some feedback, a lot of the use is just from the neighborhoods crossing by to downtown and not extended and prolonged use of the park. And then there's also the lower riverlands area adjacent to the river. That was formerly used as an event space. It's part of the flood control system, the levee. It's the only section of the river south of Highway 1 without a levee, and there's trees which provide canopy coverage above the river, and that offers unique habitat for the river itself. And then this effort was really identified in the 2030 Parks Master Plan to consider a comprehensive renovation of the park, and so that's why we undertook the process. Moving on to just an overview of the public engagement process. We started with a needs assessment. We met with a variety of stakeholder groups. They helped us understand some of the issues that they've been grappling with. We helped frame those issues for a community meeting as well as a community-wide survey. We developed a needs assessment, brought that to the city council for direction on some guiding principles and design goals for redesign process. Thereafter, we took the direction and developed three options for layout, and then met with through, had a community meeting, narrowed that down to two options, did a public community-wide survey, narrowed that down to a recommended option, went to the Parks and Rec Commission, received that feedback, revised it again, developed the final report, and now we're here tonight, or this afternoon. So for the needs assessment, just a tremendous response from the community. Some of the key takeaways, definitely safety concerns and a desire for improved playgrounds, pickleball courts, opportunities for sports events, and natural restoration, and to include both active and some quieter experiences like bird watching or being able to read on a park bench. The guiding principles and design goals, those were approved by the council. Won't read through all of them, but just to touch on the guiding principles, keep the parks clean, safe and secure, make the park uniquely Santa Cruz and reflect our culture, activate the park, make the park a sustainable green space for everyone, promote biodiversity and natural habitat, create a park that attracts community and visitors, offer a range of activities, events and programs for all ages and abilities, increase visibility and accessibility of the park and river, preserve and enhance flood management in the riverlands. As I mentioned before, we developed three layout and use options. We held a community meeting. Really, it's just variations of how much space to, for natural restoration, how much for play, how much for events. Definitely, it was clear that most people at that meeting preferred option two. We took all the other comments that we received, provided another community-wide survey with two options based on that feedback. It was very close in terms of concept A and concept B, relation to how much area to restore, but 58% preferred concept A for the riverlands configuration, so a little bit of lawn and event space still in the riverlands. In terms of recreation, bocce, basketball, pickleball, lawn bowling, were kind of the higher tier from that particular survey. We presented a revised concept, Parks and Recreation. They provided us with some additional guidance that we worked through. And then in terms of the final report, June 9th, we went to the Parks and Rec Commission. One thing that's highlighted that they added during the motion is to ensure that limited public access to the riverlands is provided to connect people to nature while maintaining and protecting the goals of the riverlands restoration. So we updated the final report to include that language. That brings us to the final report. Really, it presents a vision and concepts for redesigning San Lorenzo Park. It's based on extensive community outreach, provides a study and analysis that helps guide future planning efforts, but concepts are not set in stone. Additional funding, study, outreach and secret review are necessary. Terms of the riverlands concept, it prioritizes natural restoration. There'd be trail access, but no more events. There'd be a vegetation management plan to guide natural restoration while also managing vegetation for flood management. Through this process, we've done a lot of work connecting with our Native American tribal communities, and they've reviewed the narrative that's in the final report and helped kind of shape and craft that language. We look, you know, forward to continuing to work with them. One thing that's exciting is this riverlands project was funded through a NOAA grant, and so that, as we work through this process, that'll be one of the first things that we see as an outcome. see as an outcome from this initial process. Terms of the upland concept, a large inclusive playground was identified. Restroom, potentially food beverage kiosk near the plaza and a playground. Central flexible plaza space to accommodate a range of activities such as roller skating, outdoor fitness, events, and recreation programs. Multipurpose lawn to accommodate event space and other recreational activities. The possibility of earthworks to create a minor amphitheater, a basketball court, four pickleball courts, and lawn bowling picnic areas, more prominent entries, new memorials, as well as a community room and maintenance building. Terms of the final report's layout and use concept, I wish I had a cursor on the left of the screen. It's more of the play area. Towards number 11, that's where you could picture maybe a kiosk with a restroom opening to a plaza. Then an open lawn area which could accommodate events, basketball court, existing lawn bowling facility, and then some pickleball courts. And these are visualizations. They're just depiction of what could be. Likely, as we move forward, it won't exactly look like this, but this is a memorial to help tell the story about the confluence. It's an important part for the history of the Native Americans. And so it's an opportunity to tell their story. You have the existing serpent that we're planning to retain. It's an important part of the history of the park. The kiosk is, you can see it in the background. A new picnic area behind the lawn bowling under the existing trees. And then the central events space and, you know, one showing the possibility of holding a small catering truck event, a mobile stage. Then the pickleball courts along the county building, example of a play area. That concludes staff recommendation and staff does recommend city council accept the San Lorenzo Park redesign final report, as well as adopt a finding of a categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA. That concludes staff's presentation and we're open for questions. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Let me ask if there are questions, comments by council members. We'll start with that. Councilmember Golda?
I'm super thrilled with how this came out. I know this has been a long time coming and there's, just after the encampment cleanups and it's been decades since that park has had some much-needed love. And I know with all the development going downtown, it's really important to have people have space outside where they can, you know, recreate and enjoy the nature. And so I guess my question is, in terms of timeline and like funding streams, what are we, what can the community expect to see? Or is there priorities around things that are going to be happening?
So, you know, in discussions with Tony Elliott, Director of Parks and Recreation, just the opportunity to explore a ballot measure to help fund, you know, some of it. There's also the Parks Facilities Tax, where we collect some fees for park development as part of our new development. So as these downtown and Ocean Street developments are built, we'll be able to utilize some of that. And I think what we'll try to do is be strategic about moving forward on certain designs that we think are going to get grant-funded and trying to do some of that work early and...
Thank you.
Thank you. For the questions, comments, councilmember Trigero?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Noah, for your presentation. Could you share with us a bit more about the decision on the removal of the duck pond?
Yes, no, no problem. I think it's, it's one of those challenging things when you try to redesign an existing park and there's a lot of memories based upon it and a lot of people cherish them. I think one of the challenges that we're going through is we've identified six acres of the park, which used to be used for other forms of recreation, event space, or utilization of lawn. And we're planning on turning that into more of a natural area and creating habitat. And so events was, it was one of the higher kind of points of desire. A lot of people remember them. So just looking at the existing uplands area of the park, it's not a whole lot of room. The pond is located right in the middle of it. And so it just, you know, made sense to, given everything to consider that. The other thing that comes into play with the pond is just, it is, it does use potable water. It's not like Westlake where it's fed, you know, through natural means. So just over time, it does consume a lot of water. It is likely a substantial cost to replace, probably wouldn't be grant-funded. So, so some of the reasons.
Thank you. Another question. Moving forward as we do with these plans, how do we collaborate with the county on this?
Yeah, thank you. So just bringing it back, during the Parks and Master Plan process, we reached out to the county. There was a property located next to the lawn bowling. We were really excited about the possibility of teaming up for collaborative development there. And so we continued those discussions through this process. Unfortunately, we weren't able to gain much traction. There is an area we identified on city property in front of the county building. We do recognize the need to be a good partner. So in terms of collaborating with the county, you know, first step would be identifying, property survey, hearing their interests. If pickleball, for some reason, isn't of interest, we do have a desire to somehow provide another type of amenity, just because that area of the park itself, when the, you know, the county workers are there, but when they're not there, it's kind of void of any use. So I think it's, I would hope that there's a mutual interest to see something work out there. So yeah, just continuing, having discussions with them.
That's my question. Thank you. Thank you, Noah.
Through the questions, comments. Councilmember O'Hara?
Thank you, Noah, for the presentation. I really appreciate that, the time, the renderings, the vision is so incredibly exciting. I think between this and the Harvey West Master Plan redesign, we're really at a pivotal point and sitting on a council where a lot of our amenities in our community are being like visionary and changing. And so I think councilmember Golda's questions about how are we going to fund this and what the timing is are going to be very paramount for us to have over the next several months or years. I do want to make a couple of comments. San Lorenzo Park kind of sits at the center of four council districts. It is really an important park and open space for our community. But as you mentioned, Noah, there's not a lot of connection between downtown and the park. And so I actually see this plan and I would hope that we could do something along these lines of making sure that we're integrating activation even across the bridge to the other side of the levee as well, to ensure that folks understand that this amenity is just over the bridge. So I'm sure you're thinking about that, but I just wanted to make sure that I said it out loud. And then on the point about the county, I looked at those pickleball courts and having previously worked at the county, pickleball is a noisy amenity. And so whatever we're doing to ensure that there's strong activation, and I love the idea, but ensuring that it is consistent with the use of the courthouse and staff at the county, I think will be really important. And I have other comments, but I'd love to wait until after we hear from the public.
For the questions, comments by members. This be the opportunity for the public to comment on the item. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Sasha Morgan. I'm the Court Executive Officer, Clerk of the Court, and Jury Commissioner. And absolutely, the redesign of the park is incredibly exciting. But I have to say, I'm disappointed though, because there's been conversation about reaching out and talking and collaborating with the county, but nobody has ever reached out to the court to have a conversation. We have three pieces that are involved here. We have our jury assembly room, our courthouse, and most of my court staff work in the county building. So one of the main offices that would overlook the pickleball courts, which I think are incredibly problematic, that's all court staff. So that's not county staff. Again, we are so excited about having just even more room for our staff to be outside and so forth. But there are a number of things that I see in the current plan that are going to negatively affect court staff, court users, and particularly our jurors. And these are all really important community members. I absolutely want to collaborate, have really good positive conversations. But again, if the county hadn't called me yesterday, I had, I had no idea that this was at this stage. Again, nobody has reached out to the court. I also want to point out so everybody remembers that court space and land is owned by California, by the Judicial Council, has nothing to do with the county. And even myself, as the Court Executive Officer, have a lot of limitations on what I can do, say, and approve, because again, court space is owned by the Judicial Council. I really appreciate everybody's time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon, city council members. And I want to thank you, Mayor Keely, for allowing our group five minutes.
Of course.
And I also want to thank you for your longtime commitment to democracy and good order. I like those, their precious virtues in this time of political crisis. I'm also excited by the staff report. And I love the general feel and look of the uplands. The tree stumps, the wild grasses, the places to do skating, skate dancing maybe, small group areas, the picnic area, the curved lines. And I carry a message of gratitude from my 60-year-old daughter who loves pickleball. As most of you know, the restoration of the riverlands is an issue that has been very near and dear to my heart. I've been following it very closely for the last almost three years now, two-plus years. And there is one statistic that I want to hold up and highlight. It is one repeated often by Karen Hall, a professor at UCSC and an internationally-recognized expert in wetland restoration. And that key statistic, maybe you already know it, and I hope if you don't, you'll take it with you today, that 90%, 90% of California wetlands have been destroyed, leaving only 10%. 90% destroyed, 10% remaining. We are fortunate that in the early 2000s, our city began restoration work on the riverlands, planting a strip of native willows, alders, box elders, and cottonwoods along the edge of the river. However, the largest portion of the riverlands is currently, not in the plan, but currently a part of that chilling 90% that's been destroyed. The original riparian forest is gone. The land is compacted. Sports activities and large public events further degrade or have degraded the area. So happy that now the staff is using the term formally. That makes me so happy, Noah. And we're hoping that there will be some amendment to the resolution today that that area will, that's the whole 6.4 acres of that area will be protected for riparian restoration. I understand that many of us are reluctant to give up that precious park space. I get it. I know this, it's crowded up there. And, but one of the joys of working on this for the last two years in my life has been gradual understanding of the amazing potential that a well-managed urban wetland could bring to our downtown, a potential that goes beyond the obvious environmental values. I want to emphasize three of those. First is the opportunity for collaboration with the Amunwetsun Tribe. I want to give credit to Noah Downing and the staff for talking to the Amunwetsun Tribe in the very first month of this process, in January 2023, I think. That says a lot for our process. And at that time, the tribe, and still, has expressed deep interest in working with the city to help us incorporate native stewardship and cultural practices into the restoration plan. It was exciting for me to learn that a native weepy village probably existed right there where the riverlands is. So this is a big cultural deal. Secondly, William Wordsworth, a poet I love, a mystic, nature mystic, praises what he calls wide passivity, wise passivity. And I like to think that the uplands part of our park will offer active recreation like concerts, sports, picnics. I also say skate dancing for councilmember Brunner. I want to see it. Festivals for all the riverlands will offer the complimentary opportunity for passive, more receptive recreation. For quietly listening to birds, for watching from close range, councilmember Golda, the flow of the river, for reading a book, to meeting and walking with a friend under the trees. And we need a place that is accessible to everyone, to a young parent pushing a stroller, a senior, or a person in a wheelchair, a stressed downtown employer shopper, a place where a wounded user of our court system might enjoy a moment of peace and beauty. I also imagine some kind of access to a possible beach, inlet or lagoon, if it's feasible, that might serve as a more natural and more educational alternative to the duck pond, much as we all are attached to that. The third potential benefit is educational. I imagine docent-led nature tours as well as wooden posts with QR codes for self-directed learning. I imagine many opportunities for residents to participate in the hands of educational... One sentence. But I firmly believe that the many environmental, cultural, spiritual education, and health-related riches that can be mined from such a project more than ensures that we can meet these challenges if we're committed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person in line. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate the work and Noah with Parks and Rec. I really appreciate everybody's hard work to make the park nice and to continue with the redesign. I want to speak a little differently than the last speaker. I cherish the opportunity for many, many people to use the park. Two of the most popular things in the park were the duck pond and events. So I understand that it's a really beautiful idealistic notion to have the wetlands, and I'm pretty certain that's the direction that this council is going to go. But what I do want to say is make it very accessible. So if you talk about limited access, what are you doing, keeping people out? You know, we want people, if we're going to get rid of the duck pond, which was the most really beloved space, then there should be access to the river. I mean, that was a beautiful description. I loved it. But let's make sure that happens. Let's not just have a dry lawn on top of the thing in the upperlands. And further, the other thing is I saw no stage in the plans. Right now, we have the Duck Island Stage, which our group, San Lorenzo Park Neighbors, hosted many concerts on. It would be fantastic to have an ongoing stage where people could do even weekly concerts. So I don't know why there's just now a lawn with a few paths in it. You know, I really would like to see a community area where we could have events, because we've taken away the main event place in this plan and we've taken away the pond. So I think those were two of the most beloved parts of the park. And I would really like to see the council ask for that to be rethought out so that people would have access, very clear access to the river, so they could see wildlife and sit in the benches, or maybe keep the pond that has just been renovated in the park. And I would like to see, in fact, the pond and the stage right now look really great. Would be great to keep them, honestly. So we could have events there. We had a day in the park with Shared Adventures last April. It was a magnificent event. We had all kinds of acts and performances on the Duck Island Stage and it was accessible. All kinds of people with wheelchairs and other accessibility. We want to keep doing that. And I don't understand exactly with this plan how that is going to invite community events. So I wanted to just make a really strong statement. Please keep access either to a duck pond or very good access to the river. Please keep a stage. Please make it accessible to the most people possible with all the new people coming into this town. Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Kimberly Finley. I am the Director of General Services with the County of Santa Cruz, and I'm here on behalf of the county today. First and foremost, we want to say how excited we are about this project, how much we understand the community needs, this park, and we're very, very excited about the redesign. Specifically though, we do have concerns, as mentioned... Um, specifically though, we do have concerns, as mentioned before, about the location of the pickleball courts. Um, we have concerns about the property line that was depicted in that final design, um as well as any noise impacts, impacts to our parking or potential safety concerns that may arise if we decided to move forward with those pickleball courts. So we are just asking to have a discussion and be included in the conversation moving forward. We want to find a mutually agreeable location or activity um to continue to support the city in this effort. So thank you very much and we look forward to discussing further.
Thank you. We're going to take the next person online, then we'll be right with you. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the city council meeting.
Hey, thank you Fred. Thank you, everybody. Uh, I, this is Brad Snyder. Um, I agree with Suzie. I have some questions about pickleball being um, you know, kind of an exclusive use for a single activity and then pickleball is uh rather noisy or uh can be, but maybe no more than simple tennis courts, but it is a, it is something where you um you apportion a single part of the park for a single activity. So I guess my recommendation would be if you do include pickleball courts, I heard the word pickleball court and then it was plural. I thought, oh, two pickleball courts and I saw the depiction. There's three pickleball courts. Um, really, uh, you know, a certain number is great, but if they were uh something that could be converted into open space during events. I think, I think a prior speaker who mentioned that the community is very concerned about the um, the use of the space for events. Now along the river is riparian and that's just a Latin word which means river, adjacent to the river. And uh it's an estuary. Uh, the tidal bore uh does come up as far as uh that park area. Um, it's uh, you know, it's regrettable that so many people uh were down there at, at a certain period, but it's still a riparian area, which, you know, just like the tide pools on uh West Cliff uh and, you know, and towards uh the state park, uh, you know, I think, I feel like that, that area should be um accessible to the public. I found the um, the U P Tribe Memorial kind of in a uh, you know, rusty iron sort of frame that is supposed to, you know, uh, show the river like some kind of picture window. I found that a little bit gauche. I hope they don't do anything like that. Um, nature is really beautiful without any help. Um, the uh, let me see, uh, you know, the, the, of course, the memorial plaque is not what I'm objecting to. I'm just uh objecting to the way that the river is uh presented. Um, but yeah, as a, as a possible wetland, prior to the establishment of the park, the pond may have been a feature which really did serve uh the uh character of uh wildlife in the county prior to uh the park existing. So you might consider having uh a water feature, as it were, uh not to try to uh make it seem like a golf course because I am by no means uh interested in having a skate park or a pump track or uh roller skating, sorry, so again, uh or, or uh or pickleball. But if it is done, as I said, I feel it should be something you uh should have convertible into open space during events. Uh, the Bluegrass Festival that happens here is almost, really almost as good as strictly, hardly strictly in the city. And uh, you know, other events could occur there. I know we have the arena now and we have uh, well, the kumbua was built since uh the uh, the pond stage was in its heyday. Uh anyways, that's all.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome.
Thank you Mayor Keely and council members. I know some of you and some of you haven't had the pleasure of meeting. Um, so I want to speak to the full restoration of the wetlands. Um, both because of what Barbara formerly said, that there's such a reduction of wetlands in the entire state. And also because as a former environmental educator and as a present day mental health worker, um professional, I've actually seen, I know this is extreme, but I have seen my suicidal client come out of that suicidality by being in nature. It was, it was not always like that, that every client would do that, but it was an amazing thing. And we have this opportunity downtown to have a place where people can go and relax, where people from the court system can relax and um actually learn something. Um, part of our global warming crisis is because we're out of touch with what is that makes our lives possible. So we could have little QR codes with interactive things that people can do and experience and learn, not just sit, but learn. And um, what a great thing for the school kids to come down to, you know, Santa Cruz High, just up the road. So I would really like to emphasize the importance of that and with floods and with everything else that can come with global warming, it's important that that restoration happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else online? Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keely and council members. Um, I'm Linda Moran on behalf of Citizens Climate Lobby and I want to thank you.
The gentle lady has five minutes. Very good. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Citizens Climate Lobby, the Santa Cruz chapter. Citizens Climate Lobby, Santa Cruz supports full restoration of the six point four acres of riverlands that is part of the San Lorenzo Park redesign project and the inclusion of tribal knowledge as a guiding directive. And we so very much appreciate that that has happened. We've been attending Parks and Rec Commission meetings. We've been writing letters and making comments and most gratefully, meeting with Noah Downing and Mike Gottse, who have been so generous with their information and willingness to listen to us. And I can't stress our appreciation enough. Um, and now I'm going to back up and talk about something that might seem unrelated, but it's not. Um, and that is that I am sort of living and breathing for the last six weeks, the organization of a citywide event called Sunday, to which you were all invited by email. And also I just um passed out some more invites for you. And um, Sunday was created or imagined by Bill McKibben early in this year. And the idea was to celebrate and to recognize um and to um deepen our sense of transformation from fossil fuel to sun and wind based energy. Um, and to really shift the paradigm for ourselves, both individually and collectively. So cities and towns all over the United States are having Sunday and in their own way. And ours is a, is a party. We're throwing a party and um there will be all kinds of, of course, vendors that you would expect, but like um solar technology vendors, but there will be all kinds of kid things too, to help kids really understand how solar power works and um, you know, what makes something go. And there'll be, um, the, the poet laureate of Santa Cruz will be there to help people write sun poems. And um, there's a lot of arts, um, there's music, there's everything you can imagine that a party would have. So, um, the, the reason that I'm excited about this is the same reason that I'm excited about this San Lorenzo Riverlands project. And that is that both of these things um constitute a paradigm shift. We're really living into a different way of having a relationship with, in one case, the sun and in the other case, our riverlands. And you know, Councilwoman Harry, you said you love the visionary aspect and, and that I do too. Um, and that is something that I think I can't emphasize enough uh is where we need to um put our energy right now. There's a, there's a importance in being very deliberate now and conscious about how we make this paradigm shift because we, a paradigm will shift, but not necessarily in the direction that you want unless you really put your energy to it. So this project in the riverlands is one of those places where we have an extraordinary opportunity to deliberately shift the paradigm. There's not many cities, I think, that have this kind of an opportunity and, and a resource. And we do, and I'm so delighted and proud that we're, we're on the way, we're doing it. Um, so I want to thank you all and I just want to be sure that I emphasize that we also, um, well, I'll back up and just say, you know, when you listen to the Amamutsun Landing know, live in, for instance, one of the things that it stresses is that the Amamutsun people are stewarding the land in traditional ways and healing from historical harms. But non-native tribal people, um, non-tribal people, I should say, also have historical harms. And that ninety percent loss of wetlands is one of them. Um, and the, and that is just a tiny bit of the historical harms that we're all experiencing. So here's a way that we actually can work on healing our harms that we've done and that we're suffering from. And so I applaud you for doing that work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have someone online, so we'll be right with you in just a moment. We're going to take the person online. Good afternoon, person online. Welcome to the council meeting.
Yeah. Hey, you know, I just can't get enough one hundred and fifty year old leftist racist lynching memorials, can you? And what a wonderful thing to bring ra, to bring race into every setting. I mean, like, where's the space for more BLM murals? Paint anti-Trump protester zones, native teepee villages. And where's the climate change globalist propaganda kiosk? It seems missing. Where's the homeless camping area? A bit more seriously, that does seem like a lot of noisy pickleball. And it's a little jammed for an open space, but open space is an endangered species, I guess. And uh, a small event area and a water feature would be welcome. Thanks.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, my name is Erica Sniewich and um I'm going to speak pretty similarly to Barbara. Um, I want to say thank you all for recognizing the importance of protecting this riparian quarter. Um, thanks Noah. I know you've been doing work in other areas as well, other riparian areas like Jesse Street Marsh. Thank you for doing that. Um, and I just, yeah, want to second the reality that our wetlands are extraordinarily precious. And there's plenty of space for other larger people centered events in other areas like amphitheaters, things like that just don't need to happen on riparian habitat. Uh, we've, we've got lots of other places in the city for that. Um, I also want to agree that we do indeed need to put forth the Amamutsun's voice and it's really up to the city for you guys to be active in asking them for input. Um, don't leave it to them to come to you. It's our job at this point to go to them. Um, and another thing I want to say is, I don't know if any of you guys have had a chance to go up to Ashland, but they have a riparian area that they've been able to restore recently and it is astounding. It's beautiful. They've got these native gardens everywhere, the amount of pollinators that are flying around. It's gorgeous. And it's a benefit to the entire city of Ashland. Ashland Lake, that's part of why Ashland thrives. I mean, they've got the whole Shakespeare Festival thing going on, but guess what? People love to go to the river for that and that's um a big draw. So I can see Santa Cruz also having a beautiful, fully restored uh riparian area. So thank you for doing that and have a wonderful day.
Thank you for being here today. Good afternoon and welcome. Good afternoon.
Hello, Mayor Keely, uh council members and the people from the parks. Um, I am here also to support restoration of the entire riverlands area of the San Lorenzo Park. The city needs this area to sequester carbon dioxide, to cool the area along the river, absorb floodwaters and save biodiversity. In an article in Grist, and I quote, "Experts have been raising the alarm over our growing disconnect to nature for decades, often by pointing to how our language has changed." We need to keep this nature language alive in Santa Cruz for the sake of our future, our biodiversity, the health of Monterey Bay and our wetland areas. Also, I would say um you could watch a webinar which was provided by the city of Sunnyvale on January twenty-ninth of this year um to work to reclaim wetlands in their area for climate resilience. The webinar is available on YouTube if you would like to watch it and it is worth watching. We need to save our park wetlands. Please continue to work with the Amamutsun members and those concerned about saving our future and completely restore the riverlands habitat in the San Lorenzo Park redesign. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you for being here. Ms. Egan, how are things at the Coastal Watershed Council?
Going well and I appreciate the extra time today as well. Uh, my name is Lori Egan and I'm the Executive Director of the Coastal Watershed Council or C W C for short. And I'm here today asking you to approve the staff report on the redesign of the park. Like so many of you, C W C believes that all Santa Cruzans deserve that opportunity to connect with nature in their daily lives. And there's over ten thousand residents from four council districts where the river and Riverwalk and San Lorenzo Park are their closest community parks. They could be that place to visit daily, to exercise and recreate, to build community and to care for and showcase our stewardship of our environment. It's our very own central park here. So we've been so fortunate to partner with the city on so many different initiatives related to the river. Ecological enhancement through River Health Days where volunteers come out and care for native plants. We've installed public art, including the repainting of the beloved Lorenzo Serpent in San Lorenzo Park, the Chinatown Bridge Memorial, riverside murals, children's art banners, you name it. And we bring kids from our local schools out to the river on field trips to learn about its ecology, to learn about its, its historical and cultural significance. And really just what an amazing space we have here in Santa Cruz. We have been following and participating in this park's redesign process since its start and we really know how much work time and consideration has gone into preparing this report. So thank you Noah and for all your colleagues on all that you've put into this so far. We are so encouraged to see the progress, including this cohesive plan that brings together such a diversity of uses and really responds to the community's feedback. There's also such a strong focus on restoration and the ecology, which is amazing to see, and the recognition of the critical role this plays in protecting downtown communities from flooding. And right this afternoon, as I'm here, we actually have a volunteer group that's out at the river that's caring for native plants, removing invasive species. And we've been doing this for ten years now, this active habitat restoration. And we've really learned a lot in that time, including that the restoration really succeeds when you bring the public out to see it, when you have that access as well as the restoration paired together. So it's really based on the experience that we've seen over these ten years as to what we think can be successful in the riverlands. And we believe that that low impact access pathways, benches and opportunities to engage with the river, those should really remain incorporated into this project. They're presented in the report as bird watching, uh hiking, educational opportunities and stewardship and they're really critically needed. And all of these amenities really allow us to focus on what we see as the most spectacular water feature of the park, which is the San Lorenzo River itself. And we know that the duck pond has been a beloved feature for so many generations of Santa Cruzans, but it's also had its own set of environmental and maintenance challenges that really need to be taken seriously. And at the same time, we can all agree that we've overlooked the river for too long. So it seems like we have a real opportunity here to, to reorient our focus on the river and retain a water feature where, you know, families can still continue to gather, to sit and observe the birds and to spend that time right at the water's edge. So we ask that you accept this report today and allow staff to continue its great progress on the design of the park. In doing so, you're going to provide that improved park that will attract visitors and it will benefit the thousands of families that rely on it. You will create new opportunities for vibrant events and recreation spaces in the uplands. And you will improve the ecology and health of the ecosystem in the riverlands while providing that education for visitors, for school field trips and for, for all those to learn about the species that rely on the river. And you will be celebrating really the history of this important natural resource and the humans that have been connected to it for thousands of years. And we believe that that connection to nature is really one of the foundational things that inspires us to protect, protect and preserve our environment and our watersheds. So thank you for approving the staff report today and thank you for taking this action for the San Lorenzo River.
Ms. Egan, thank you and your organization. We're better. We're a better community, and the river is healthier because of your fine work. Thank you so much for that. Anyone else? Do we have anyone else online? Anybody else wish to testify on this matter? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Teguero is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. If my colleagues have no further questions or comments, I have a motion that I'd like to bring forward that I've sent ahead to Bonnie.
Say it again.
I've sent a motion ahead to Bonnie. So I'll start while you bring it up. My motion is to, one, accept the San Lorenzo Park redesign final report from staff; and, two, adopting a finding of categorical exemption. This was also listed in the staff report related to sequel lines. And, three, I'd like to direct staff to evaluate a potential agreement to dedicate the Riverlands portion of the San Lorenzo Park to Indigenous peoples as a living cultural landscape in a form and scope determined through close consultation with local tribal partners and consistent with the August 2025 San Lorenzo Park conceptual redesign final report and applicable grant flood and environmental requirements. Staff shall continue engagement with tribal partners throughout the process and compensate them for their consultation using available project funds. And lastly, return to city council in six months with a recommended policy to compensate tribal partners for consultation on other city projects and ensure alignment with the city's work on the equitable engagement policy. Second.
There's a motion. There's a second by Councilmember O'Hara. You may open on your motion. Councilmember Teguero.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for your public comment today. As this park does touch four districts but lives in mine, I'm happy to bring this motion forward, and I appreciate Councilmember O'Hara's second. I'd like to address a couple of things as I open this motion. And one, top of which, being our ecological values and our hopes for this space. The grant that we have for the Riverlands is dedicated towards restoring that space, removing invasive species, and really making the flood shelf a more sustainable area for us. The flooding that occurs along the river affects county buildings, affects the jail, and is an important part of staff's plan here. Access to the river and ADA access, I believe that the vision that we've seen will promote those. The duck pond, I feel like I should definitely speak to the duck pond right now. The duck pond has been historically significant, but it represents a man-made structure that is not current best practices. And I think we heard a lot of feedback today about bringing the ducks essentially back to the river. And in the kid-friendly city that I envision, I envisioned the kids going to the river to see the ducks. So I view this plan overall from staff as a launching point, and I look forward to how the plans will take shape based on funding and continued collaboration. And I want to thank the county representatives that came today, and Sasha Morgan, thank you for your exemplary work as CEO of the Courts. You're also an incredible volunteer in our community as a mentor with Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I really appreciate your feedback. And in my question earlier, I do believe that staff will be connecting with the county more. And so, that being said, all being said, my motion attempts to essentially support staff and their recommendation and also re-deepen, deepen our commitment to our partners, the Ammamutson tribe. Their stewardship of the land precedes all of us and will continue in the future, and I hope that this motion will solidify the city's value in honoring our tribal partners. And then lastly, the last point in my motion is simply capturing compensation. Compensation structures for tribal entities is something that is a discussion point in many jurisdictions. Very recently, the County of Santa Cruz has enacted a three-year pilot. I took that as a cue, and that is a prompt for this portion of my motion. Thank you.
Thank you for the debate or discussion. Councilmember Brenner is recognized.
Thank you for the motion. I have a couple of clarifying questions for parks. And thank you for presenting the report and all of the information thus far. The location of the elements identified for park use in this final report, for example, the pickleball courts, are not set in design yet. Is that correct? The location of where things are, these are just renderings of examples?
Yes, I mean, it sets a vision and tries to establish what uses should be located there, but it allows the flexibility. And so, you know, through noise studies or other concerns from the county, you know, we could look at other sites or working, hopefully with the county, maybe on their property, and if not, you know, elsewhere.
Okay. And then the Riverlands, the lower portion of the park as restored area, does that mean there can or cannot be paths to the water's edge for people to enjoy the water and have it be ADA accessible?
It's a great question. I think it requires a little bit more study and analysis getting to the water's edge, but definitely ADA pathways can be located there, but exactly how close to the water's edge, given the flood plan and different requirements.
Understandable. Okay, I just, it seemed like they were exclusive of each other, and in my mind, I thought that was an option. Okay. And regarding the courts, and I always say multi-use courts, that's a big one, dedicating courts for specific uses when... So I just, I know when we get to that point in time, that's not now. I understand the elements of having activities, and some of these activities require a hard surface. So whatever land is allocated to these activities on hard surfaces, that they're smooth surfaces, not cracks and sidewalks, for example, and that they're multi-use as much as we can. And I just want to call that out. I didn't really understand that in this, but I think it's really important to have that equity. And then for my last question, the stage versus the plaza. I know in a lot of the meetings over the last couple of years, that plaza was envisioned for, that could be used as a stage area. It looks like also there is some lawn area for an event space. I know events at the park, San Lorenzo Park neighbors, one of them was here to speak, and they've also been stewards of this park since COVID. I know I've volunteered several cleanups and efforts with them and other park staff. So I'm just curious about that part of it.
Yeah, I think either way it could work. What we hear from other organizations in terms of dealing with a stage is sometimes a mobile stage is better, just because as events come in, they like to set up their events a certain way. At the same time, if we want to look into and design more of a fixed-stage element, we could make that work in this space as well.
At what point in time, how can people stay updated in this process and know that at that time their input would be accepted?
So we'll maintain the noticing list, and at this point, we don't have funds identified to move forward on the next stage, but as we move forward in stages, it'll definitely be noticed, and there'll be signs placed in the park, and we'll reference the same noticing list, just to build upon what we have.
And my last question that someone brought up, maybe it was Councilmember O'Hara, is it possible, would it be through this avenue where San Lorenzo Park with an arrow could be added to wayfinding signs around downtown and major streets around the park? We have wayfinding signs. I don't know at what point or if it would be additional signage, but really calling out that our beautiful San Lorenzo Park and green space and wetlands arrow this way.
Yeah, that wayfinding is very important as people navigate through town. Yes is the short answer. We would work with Public Works and look to update any current wayfinding signage and/or use that as a template to further provide wayfinding for San Lorenzo Park.
Great. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. Bonnie, would you mind, excuse me, would you mind bringing the motion back up? I just want to reflect a little bit as the second, what the motion means to me in terms of intent, because I think that might be helpful. I first want to express my appreciation to Councilmember Teguero for her leadership in walking through some conversations with me and with staff. This motion was created in consultation with the Parks Director, Park Staff, and the City Manager's Office, as well as Dr. Wise West, I know was engaged a little bit on the compensation of our tribal partners. So I did want to express some appreciation for getting through that with staff leading up to today. One thing that I want to share in terms of what this motion means for me specifically, I have a long personal history with the park as a city employee. I supervised the events coordinator when she was in the City Manager's Office. And during that time that I was in the City Manager's Office, I think we had at least half a dozen major events in what was called the Benchlands, and what I would refer to as the Benchlands, Taco and Tequila, Earth Day. Thousands of people would come out and enjoy the space. That was not without impacts. So I want to say, though, the activation was really part and parcel to Santa Cruz's identity at the time. People came to Santa Cruz to go to those events, and they were well-attended, and people really enjoyed it. So I have that perspective that I'm bringing to this motion. I also have the perspective of personally working to clean out the Benchlands multiple times from encampments, entrenched encampments where there were, you know, significant public safety issues, significant environmental impact issues. Having folks living in the flood control area is a huge problem and something that we have been grappling with for many, many years. And I feel like we, by virtue of closing the Benchlands, have finally gotten a handle on that not being an attractive area for people to camp. That is a perspective I bring to this motion. I also was chair of the Coastal Watershed Council for a number of years, and the work that we do, did, that Lori and her team continues to do, to serve as vocal stewards for what does having a riparian ecosystem that supports not just our community, but our community of wildlife, our community of flora and fauna, it is a critical piece of, quite frankly, the heartbeat of our community, the San Lorenzo River. And that, just by virtue of having a park that is adjacent to the river, is something that we should be talking about screaming from the rooftops. It should be part of the brand of Santa Cruz. It's so important, and not a lot of communities have that. So my intent with number three, and I think this probably is shared by Councilmember Teguero, is to turn the Riverlands back over to the ecosystem. I don't think that area should be accessible to pretty much anybody except for the wildlife and the species that are supported by it. That being said, I think there should be opportunities to explore access pathways, ways for our community to sink in, not specifically or, you know, physically, but at least emotionally to the space. So I love the idea of continuing to look into that and make sure that we have conversations about access, but in consultation and in conversations with the Parks Director, and particularly, we heard through their long, very deliberate work with our tribal partners, I think this should be in consultation with our tribal partners. This is an important area of town that we really should seed what is the right approach. And I really feel strongly about that. Number three is not directive in that way, like this must happen. Number three says, let's start this dialogue very deliberately and make sure that we are very focused on restoring the habitat as much as we can. I mean, the habitat was destroyed in 1955, when the levees were built. There are ways to bring habitat back. Other cities across the U.S. are doing this, replanting, thinking about all kinds of different mechanisms for doing this. It can happen. So that is that my intent for three is to be very deliberate about turning this area over, restoring the ecosystem as much as we possibly can, and making sure that we do that in consultation with our tribal partners. And making sure that they are compensated through these conversations, because they really do have limited capacity. Councilmember Teguero and I had a much, much more direct motion. That Director Elliott gave us a lot of enlightening feedback, yes, enlightening feedback on in terms of the capacity of our tribal partners. We want to be careful about that, but I do think we need to be deliberate in engaging and also deliberate in what is the right approach for the Riverlands to ensure that, as we heard from the public, that we're taking a step in this direction. I think it's the right direction. It's been now 75 years since we have deliberately made this, you know, a choice to go back in this direction. So that I just wanted to share. Thank you.
The Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I have some questions and comments. My first question is to staff, this is a robust and lengthy community engagement process, and I really want to acknowledge and commend you all for that. I know that that's not easy. I, well, I don't want to make an assumption, but was the county informed of this engagement process? They must have been aware. I'm just bringing up the comments that were made earlier by some of the folks from the county. So where was, where, where was the, where did it fall through the cracks?
I think that the difference between the county and the county courthouse as being separate entities is probably where the majority, but as part of the initial key stakeholder outreach was with county staff.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, they've been noticed and have asked questions along the way, so.
Got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So we were and have been engaged with the county, but within the buildings and within the departments, that didn't necessarily get translated, but it seems like there's opportunity to do more of that, and that's the ask I heard. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate your work, Councilmember Teguero, and Councilmember O'Hara on this, and the motion that you brought forward, the additions that you gave us. I do have some questions around the compensation. I understand this is where jurisdictions are leaning towards, and I think it's important to set parameters. If we can bring the motion back up, please, Ms. Bush. And maybe this is a friendly amendment, and maybe it's already within the motion, but I would feel better if we added this friendly moment. I think, I think, let me just say, I do think it's important that we compensate our partners. So I should have started with that. And, you know, project funds, what project funds? We don't know where those funds will come from, what are the parameters? So maybe it's just simply on item four, return to city council in six months with, I can't read it, with a recommended policy to compensate tribal partners for, well, hold it, okay, return to city council within six months with a recommended policy that outlines parameters and a framework. So that would be added, that outlines parameters and a framework for compensation of tribal partners. Would that be acceptable as a friendly amendment?
Acceptable as a friendly amendment. A second to the motion.
Yes, and I do have some clarifying.
That is a... That is a, then you still have the floor.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor.
So that, that was what I wanted to add around the compensation. And then just the piece around the engagement and the Riverlands and restoration of the Riverlands. I think what's outlined in the report and in this, in the agenda report and the actual report really makes sense, that we restore the Riverlands and allow access. I mean, for centuries, humans have interacted with that river. You know, the Amamutsin tribal band interacted with the river. We had a Chinatown on the river. Obviously, our population has grown and our impact has grown, and we use nature differently, so all of that has to be taken into consideration. But I think interaction and access with the river is essential and very important. And I think the way that the staff has written it accounts for that. I want to make sure that it does, that I'm reading it correctly. But some level of interaction, I mean, we heard from Coastal Watershed Council, it's essential so that we don't forget what the river means to us and how we can contribute to it and how it can contribute to us. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Those have been accepted as friendly amendment. Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you. Just one clarifying point on number three. It's our understanding that there is built-in compensation through the NOAA grant for the consultation with the tribal partners. It's already funded. Just want to make sure that you understood that we weren't looking for additional funds for that.
Councilmember Golders recognized.
I just want a little clarity. So with this motion, are you suggesting that, I have concerns, the same as the Vice Mayor, that we're limiting access to the river? For humans?
I'm not sure staff would want to speak to this, but it does sound to me like we can have both, access to the river and more concerted effort towards repairing the wetlands, flood mitigation. You know, maybe that looks like raised walkways as they do in estuaries. I'm not sure on those specifics, but my hope is that both is there. The ADA access, children's access, having a kid-friendly city that kids can become future River Rangers, like my son is a River Ranger, but that we are to the fullest extent allowing the Amamutsin and the staff to have conservation efforts.
So I have a question. What if the Amamutsin came back and they wanted to restore Steelhead and allow fishing? And renewing and things that are right now not happening in the river? What would your thoughts be on that?
If I could chime in, I think that would warrant more study. So, you know, as we engage with our tribal partners, if there was interest in wanting to take further actions around environmental remediation and restoration efforts, those are, those are policy decisions that we would need to bring back to the council and also weigh the implications of river access that we've been discussing today. So that's not a commitment the council would be making as part of today's action. And in implementing the council's direction, if it required further discussion, we would certainly bring that back to you all.
Thank you. And then I guess my question is to staff. How is this motion? Is this motion gonna, is this able to be implemented the same way as the staff recommendation that was provided for us in the agenda packet, or do you see it as any kind of conflict?
I don't see it as a, as a conflict. I think it really, from our understanding of, from both tribes that we've been in discussions with, is they really do have limited capacity of what they can take on. And the other thing to consider is, while they may be doing work there, I think the city also has to consider kind of flood requirements and long-term maintenance and upkeep, just due to where it's located. And so I think there is a way to put a plan together, you know, both a revegetation plan and an operations plan, and get that permitted and have some clear guidance. I think that's really going to have to be worked out throughout the NOAA grant process. But it is something we could come back to the council, you know, as part of that process and have that discussion.
If I could just add to those comments, this is not suggesting that we would completely wash our hands of being involved with the Riverlands area. I think, you know, the direction really is to continue to partner with them and explore opportunities for expanded partnership, and we don't see it as being in conflict with what staff's recommendations were for the final.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the consultation, but I also appreciate the scientific knowledge, the urban planning, the parks, master plans, and all of the other components that go into a project of this magnitude. So I just didn't want it to hinder all the work that's been happening. So, okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Further questions or comments?
Quick question, sir. Is there any of these amendments that are being offered, friendly amendments that are being included in the additionally to the motion that came forward originally from the staff? Do any of these trigger, make any difference in terms of the finding on sequo exemption?
Answer that, no.
Madam City Attorney.
No, it doesn't. At this point, it is not, this is a report and not a firm plan that the council is approving right now.
So when these additional, when this returns additionally, we'll see if that continues to be the case. Is that it?
I could answer that. So as part of the NOAA process, there will be environmental review, because that is, that will be a defined project. It is funded. We will have specificity about what we're actually constructing, and there will be sequo as well as NEPA review.
Thank you. Let me see if, I'm not sure I'm entirely tracking what's going on with regard to this compensation issue. Is this compensation to the tribes who have interests in this land to participate in a process, or it is compensation? I'm trying to understand who's making compensation to whom, from what source? Who's making compensation, who is providing compensation to whom, from what source?
So I think there's a reliance on a lot of agencies to have this perspective as part of the review process. And I think, you know, sometimes they're not compensated to actually work and consult on various projects. And so when they perform consultant work, like say as part of an archaeological assessment, or when they're on site during construction to monitor, that they're actually going to be compensated for the time they're spent there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Further questions or comments? Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Bruner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari-Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passes and sworn. Thank you all very much for the good work you did. Thanks to those of you who are with us today on this item. What we are going to do is we are going to recess until 5:00 P.M. We have told folks on the land use matter that we would likely be taking this up about 5:00 o'clock, so we will stand in recess until 5:00 P.M.
Yes.
The hour of 5:00 o'clock having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council will be called back into session, and the clerk will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Present.
Councilmember Bruner is currently absent. Newsom?
Present.
Holder?
Here.
O'Hara? Vice Mayor Calentari-Johnson?
Present, excuse me.
And Mayor Keely.
Present. Having established a quorum, we will be moving forward on item number 24. This is an appeal of a planning commission approval of a project at 1118, 1115, 1119 Mission Street. What we will do, for those of you that may be unfamiliar with the process of an appeal, how we will proceed this evening is as follows. First, we will receive a staff presentation. Then, we will entertain questions by members of the city council. At that point, we will move to the appellant. The appellant will have 20 minutes to present on their appeal. At that point, the applicant will have 20 minutes to present to the city council. Then there will be public comment. Following that, the appellant will have five minutes to rebut issues raised by the applicant and members of the public, but no new issues may be raised. Following that, the public hearing will be closed. The matter will be back before the body to make a decision on the appeal. So if anybody needs for me to repeat that, I would be glad to do it. I'm looking out here. I'm seeing people understand what I'm saying. Very good. How we will proceed then is we will begin now with the staff presentation. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Keely. Good evening, Mayor Keely and councilmembers. So my name is Rena, and I'm the project planner for the project at 1811, 1815, and 1819 Mission Street. The, um... Got it. So the item for your consideration is an appeal of the planning commission's approval of the residential demolition authorization permit, lot line adjustment, design permit, and density bonus request to demolish three residential dwelling units, combine three lots into one lot, and to construct a six-story mixed-use building with 67 residential units as shown on this slide. This project is located at the corner of Mission Street and Dufore Street as shown on this slide, and the subject properties, as well as the properties directly adjacent to the rear of the properties, are all zoned community commercial. This slide shows all of the noticing that's been done to date on the project. This project has been noticed in 14 different ways since it was first admitted as an SB330 only pre-application. Regarding the public outreach that's been done for this project, a community meeting and a public hearing has been held so far, with this being the second public hearing. The owner has also been in communication with the lead contact for the Dufore and Palm Street neighbors throughout the entitlement process as well. So as I'm sure we're all aware by now, this project is protected by state laws, and so there's very limited discretion that the city has in reviewing the project. With that being said, I do want to highlight how great this project turned out, just because the owner and the applicant were willing to work with the city as well as the neighborhood, and they were willing to listen to and try to address neighborhood concerns early on in the process. The voluntary actions that they took to improve this project include a significant redesign of the project from what they originally submitted in their SB330 pre-application to what is before the council tonight. The developer is not required to spend the money to redesign the project, but they did so in response to the community feedback. As you can see on this slide, on the left of the slide, it shows the previous design, which was more boxy and rectangular, and the right of the slide shows that the currently proposed design is more architecturally interesting through the articulation, the step backs, and the placement of balconies as well. The public also commented how the original design does not fit in well with the character of Santa Cruz, which is what the owner and the applicant responded to. This shows the rear facade, which is also significantly redesigned from the left to what is proposed on the right. The original design had large blank walls on the left, and then on the right, you can see that it's a lot more architecturally interesting. There's large changes in plane, changes in materials compared to what you see on the left. Other voluntary actions include providing windows that are frosted along the rear elevation, and so these windows are frosted up to a height of 61 inches from the floor, meaning that including the top portions, it includes some of the top portions of the windows even on the fifth story. The project proposes to provide 14 parking spaces, but the owner has also offered to pay for a neighborhood permit parking program for two years, although this neighborhood permit parking program does have to be initiated by the neighborhood. The tenants in this proposed building would not be eligible for the neighborhood permit parking program. And lastly, the owner has also agreed to provide a landscape allowance of $1,000 each to 12 identified neighbors to put up trees and shrubs to help shield views. So just want to thank the owner and the applicant for redesigning this project in response to the community feedback, which provided for a better project. So the only issue raised in the appeal letter is related to the loading zone issues at the existing commercial building on the south side of Dufore Street, as well as the lack of a loading zone for the proposed project. The issues raised regarding the existing loading zone on the south side of Dufore Street is not part of the project, and because the property is also located within a half mile of a major transit stop, as shown in the image on the right, with the subject properties outlined in red, the city cannot require that the project provide a loading zone for this particular project. But with that being said, after discussions with the appellant as well as the city, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to install a loading zone on the north side of Dufore Street across from the existing loading zone for the new building to use to alleviate community concerns. The applicant will be required to show the new loading zone that will be proposed along the northern curb line of Dufore Street on the building permit plan, and these will have to be installed prior to building permit final. I did also want to note that we are recommending like a modified condition of approval as well. A modification was made to the condition of approval, number 54, to make it more specific as to where that loading zone is located, and so that modified condition is shown on the screen here.
Excuse me, for just my record reflected, Councilmember Bruner has arrived. Please proceed.
Thank you. So therefore, staff is recommending the denial of the appeal, upholding the planning commission's approval with the revised conditions of approval, and we are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions by councilmembers. Questions at this point? Seen, hearing, none. Let me now go to Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas is the appellant. Mr. Thomas will have up to 20 minutes to make remarks. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
This screen over here is just blown up. People can't really see it.
Okay.
All right, yeah, then. Presentation showing. One sec. There you go. Happy end of summer, everybody. Wasn't it beautiful rain this morning? I thought it was amazing. And can I just do a quick test? How do I? Is it this switch button? There we go. Technology. All right, should I go?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening, city council. My name is Bruce Thomas. You can see on the slide, I've kind of been the leading advocate for all the Dufore and Palm Street neighbors. Thank you for hearing this appeal. The specific goal of this appeal is to get traffic safety issues at the end of Dufore Street solved after many years of unsafe conditions. Solving these before Mission Studios is constructed is imperative, as the new six-story building is going to add significant traffic safety issues. Yes, we have a public safety issue that's already present, one that will get worse once Mission Studios is built. It comes down to delivery trucks frequently double parking at the entrance to Dufore Street, right off of Mission Street, and we know that Mission Street is also California Highway 1. The situation is due to poorly enforced parking restrictions and the inadequately sized loading zone at the corner of Dufore and Mission Street, which is this one I designate as the existing undersized loading zone to the right. Double parking results in a blocked lane of traffic at a very busy intersection. This poses regularly occurring traffic safety hazards. The encouraging news is that the developer has included and had included and continues to include loading zone in his plans. Thank you, Andy. That was, and my appeal asks for this new loading, asked for this new loading zone to be approved, even though the, it was initially considered not necessary at the planning commission meeting of July 17th. Alas, it has been approved, and I'd like to thank the Director of Public Works for all his efforts to coordinate with me and hearing the concerns and allowing this loading zone to go forth. The Dufore neighbors are convinced that this will improve the situation at the end of Dufore Street. It should reduce the amount of double parking taking place. And thank you for catching that little change, edit to the condition of approval 54. Oh, I gotta do it. So a brief history is in order. So a brief history is in order because it leads up to where we are today, and it gives insights on why it's so important to get things right early on, especially when public safety is at stake. When Starbucks opened in twenty seventeen, there was no loading zone, and it was mayhem. This resulted in a slew of problems, and after a bunch of meetings and a bunch of time, this meeting is including people from Public Works and the Planning Department, it was concluded we could paint a curb yellow and post some commercial loading signs. So, um, a yellow curb was created, and yet I have to note it was done as an afterthought, not from the onset. The yellow curb was, um, the yellow curb was created as an afterthought, and it's had continual and ongoing issues ever since. And these, uh, have been reported, traffic safety issues, continual and ongoing, have been reported to the chief of police parking enforcement. I actually sent you some emails on it, Mr. Mayor. And, um, but the prevailing answer has always been we don't have the resources. At least that's, that was the final from the chief of police. That was the verbatim from him. So, um, I gotta point out, I'm, I would like the city to hear a key lesson here. It's important to factor loading zones into new building designs even, especially ones along busy corridors. I know this is contrary to municipal code twenty-four twelve tw- two twenty, but it's something that needs to be done to avoid public safety issues. All right. The ongoing issues are well documented. This panel of photos shows many instances of a blocked lane of traffic at the entrance to DeForest Street over the course of the last year. This is just a small subset of all the photos that have been collected, and these photos span five years' time. It's ongoing. It's been a problem since Starbucks loading zone was created, and it's something that really needs to be addressed. It will affect the new building. So some zoom-ins. Here are some zoom-ins that show instances of issue number one, cars parked at the yellow curb outside of Starbucks, forcing delivery truck to double park and block lane of traffic. The Starbucks customers are parking their, their, in their minds, I'm just going in for three minutes to get a coffee, but when they do this, it blocks the delivery truck from using the loading zone. And one other detail, these are not all enforcement lapses because the current signage does say eight PM to midnight for loading, commercial loading zone. The lower-left image, the four-thirty image, is the only one that's for which a parking violation could have been written because it's the only one that's after eight PM. More on this later. And by the way, the start, these trucks are usually parked there for about twenty-five to thirty minutes, so it gets real scary. I'm gonna have some more to say about that. Uh, responsible for that. Issue number two is that the loading zone is not big enough to support eighteen-wheelers. And with Starbucks, eighteen-wheelers arrive every day of the week, including Thanksgiving, I'll add, and they typically arrive in the early to mid-evening. With no car, when no cars are parked at the loading zone by Starbucks, the more careful delivery truck drivers try to pull in close to the yellow curb and then angle the cab, their cab out in a jackknife manner around the traffic calmer, Tree Island. The cab still part, blocks part of the incoming lane of traffic, but at least people immediately off of Mission Street can scooch through a little bit better than they can when it's all in the full lane. Um, the lower-left image does show a game of car dodge, which I will be talking about in a little bit. That's part of this, one of the harrowing aspects of the traffic safety there. And I do have to announce that it's not an easy problem to solve. Fixing this problem is a whole ball of wax. This, um, those traffic calmers, those little concrete tree islands were installed when the, um, telephone poles were removed from Mission Street under a California state grant, and it's my understanding that, um, the city would have to pay back the state grant if they, if they get moved before sunset period is expired. I've talked to the planning director about this, and, um, so it's not, it's a big ball of wax. Try to solve the loading zone size issue. So that leads me to, uh, the loading zone size issue is going to take a long time to fix, so for practical reasons, the key issue to resolve as part of this appeal is enforcement. How do we make sure yellow curbs can be used by delivery trucks so that delivery vehicles don't need to park in the middle of DeForest Street and block lane of traffic? Trucks are forced to move out to, onto DeForest Street when there are cars or motorcycles parked at the yellow curbs. This is an issue that has produced daily, that is producing daily traffic hazards right now and needs to be addressed ASAP, and doing so, we will come up with solutions for the new building as well. Here are examples of recent cases of traffic safety craziness at the end of DeForest Street. What I want to point out here is that it gets very scary when you want to drive out onto Mission Street. The image on the right shows a car driving on the wrong side of the street to enter DeForest Street. This car, which has just turned into Do- onto DeForest Street from Mission Street, has to navigate through and hope that no one's coming at him. The image on the left shows a car trying to drive out as they, and has had to park, do its brakes to let the incoming car through. It's a really scary game of dodge is what it is, with cars guessing who's going to go first. This has been going on for years now. Cars turning off Mission Street have an extra sense of urgency. They need to get out of the flow of traffic because it is Highway One. When a lane of traffic is blocked, driving at the end of DeForest Street becomes harrowing. And this is before the new building's in. Here are examples from August. Oh, help if I do that. Here are examples from August. In this case, a pickup truck parked at the yellow curb outside Starbucks and is blocking the delivery truck from trying to get close to the curb, so the delivery truck just parks in the middle of the road. I know the story will change when there's a new building on the right. The, the tree there will be gone. It will be a big tall six-story building, but the concern is that it will compound the traffic safety issues because there will be so many more people. There will also be an entrance to the new building's parking area, which will include fourteen spaces, so this is something the city needs to address. A new loading zone will be, will be just as problematic at the Star- as the Starbucks loading zone unless effective measures are put in place to prevent Starbucks customers or other non-delivery vehicles from parking at the new loading zone. Solving this enforcement problem is critical to both the cr- the current traffic safety issues and to the success of the new loading zone. So time to solve this is now. Simply hiring additional parking enforcement officers, officers isn't going to solve the loading zone enforcement problem. The mindset of the typical Starbucks customer is I'm just going in for three minutes. Yeah, maybe if we had enforcement officers coming by every fifteen minutes, but that doesn't seem realistic. So the city and the developer need to come up with additional ways of ensuring yellow curbs remain available for deliveries and Uber lift DoorDash drivers. Here's, um, one idea that I actually, I was talking with council member, Councilman Larry Johnson this morning about was maybe requiring Starbucks to hire a traffic attendant, much like Trader Joe's does downtown, but I was informed the city cannot do that. They cannot force business to do that. So just throwing out ideals. My picture here has another ideal. Uh, we see these plastic bollards going up all over the place to delineate bicycle lanes. Well, why not use them in this case to delineate a four-drivers-only temporary parking zone? This happens to be the location specified in the plans that are being called out as the new loading zone. Um, a real, I mean, in my, I, I, it would be really wonderful if the city would be super forward-thinking and actually reduce the sidewalk from eight feet to six feet because then that loading zone there with bollards could be ten feet, and it would accommodate Amazon and, and UPS trucks, but, um, I know that's a high aspiration. The critical thing is to make sure loading zones can be used as loading zones. What happens here, and in fact, this car was parked for cust- was a customer of Starbucks, so people are blocking that, so in the future, when that's a loading zone, if someone wanted to do a delivery there, they'd have to double park or park somewhere else. All right. And some key questions were asked at the community meeting of September, uh, a year ago, that September, one of the early community meetings for this project, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The original plans had an internal loading zone, and, um, those actually are the plans that came out in January, but, um, it, after review, it was discovered that the truck was gonna have to back out. It was too dangerous to use that parking area as a loading zone because they didn't have any way for the truck to turn around. So, um, Q one probably doesn't have a good onsite solution, but Q two, um, another way to help the nearby neighbors not have double parking around our cars and drivers is for the new building to have, to designate some specific parking spaces, and in fact, I'm identifying thirteen and fourteen, the ones closest to the, um, entrance, as maybe ten-minute-only drop-off spots. I've talked with Andy about this. We actually meet, we've met on fairly regular basis. We talk and he was, he said he was open to this idea, but again, this could help alleviate double parking in the neighborhood and add to the public safety that this appeal is calling for. All right. An additional note, the current signage really isn't correct for how the loading zone at Starbucks is currently being used. The, um, commercial loading zone, the evening's, um, timeframe is listed as eight PM to midnight, and yet delivery trucks frequently arrive before eight PM. So parking at the loading zone before eight PM is currently permitted, and a citation would not be able to be cited right now. So this is part of the overall package of the enforcement issues. Again, the goal is to try to prevent delivery trucks from blocking a lane of traffic on DeForest Street, allowing them to park at the curb so they don't block a lane, and especially since it's a very busy intersection. All right. So my overall goals of this appeal were to solve the loading zone enforcement issue that's been present for many years. Currently at, at the Starbucks side of the street, it's, the solution will also service the new building's loading zone. So after five years of waiting, my, my, uh, appeal also called for oversight, so we can have a mechanism that says, yes, it's being addressed, and then a confirmation that it has been addressed to the best of its ability. And, um, I'd like to have the city and developer do everything possible to limit the amount of double parking on DeForest Street. This is something the DeForest neighbors are extremely concerned about. It's happening now. DoorDash drivers have blocked my, me from getting out, and it's just gonna get worse when there's a building with a hundred units and only fourteen parking spaces. And lastly, I do, um, call for citizen involvement in the creation of new policies. For example, the transit proximate challenges initiative that passed at last city council meeting, uh, citizens may have direct experiences that can help inform the new policies and make them more meaningful and effective, and I'm grateful for that motion. There's a couple of questions I want to raise too in this, um, era, new era that we're living in. The conditions of approval presented in the agenda are written for a mixed-use building with sixty-seven residential units. What happens if the developers submit plans to the building department with more than sixty-seven units? Won't that make the COAs invalid? These are some of the nuances of playing this, uh, game of, uh, converting amenity spaces to ADUs that needs to be worked out and transparent. So, um, I think that's a question that deserves to be asked of the legal counsel, and, um, I again, I want to echo the need for oversight is really important, and enforcement of the parking restrictions is needed now, not six months after the building is built. It's needed now. These efforts will also be a proving ground for the enforcement issues that the new loading zone will face. So kind of to summarize my appeal, delivery trucks are currently blocking a lane of traffic at a very busy intersection, namely DeForest Cross Mission. There's no news light. On a regular, uh, let me continue. Delivery trucks are currently blocking a lane of traffic at a very busy intersection, namely DeForest Cross Mission, on a regular basis, and this has been going on for years, even though it's been reported to the chief of police, public works, and others. The issues that are causing these traffic hazards are likely to also occur with the new loading zone when the new building goes online, so it is imperative to start addressing the issues immediately for current public safety and in order to set the stage for traffic safety when the new building goes online. The core issue in, is that Starbucks customers frequently park at the yellow curb, which prevents delivery trucks from parking at the yellow curb. This is likely to happen at the new loading zone too, unless things are carefully thought out. Increased parking enforcement alone is not likely to solve this core problem. I want to say thank you, but I'm actually not quite done yet.
Thank you, sir.
Do I have a minute or two? What was my, was I twenty minutes already?
No, I don't believe so. I think you have a couple more minutes.
No, I would like to just do thirty seconds more.
Please, go ahead.
Because I do happen to know this is a de novo meeting, and there was, and there's an issue that some of my neighbors are gonna present, and I wanted to present some visuals to just back those, their concerns up. I already talked to Andy about this. This isn't meant to be a surprise to him, and, um, it has to do with the privacy of the Palm Street residences, that, um, those balconies on the, what we're calling the north side of the new building will peer into a bunch of properties, and I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, but just, I want to call it that there are gonna be neighbors bringing this up, privacy issues that Andy, I will say, and I want my, the neighbors to hear this, in private conversations with Andy, he's been more than open to try and find ways to solve these. Um, and, um, I'd like him to maybe state those for the public record also so the neighbors can hear that. I have confidence in Andy. I want to hopefully get my neighbors on board as well, but there are pretty egregious privacy issues that, um, and I appreciate the motion you passed on June twenty-fourth, like, council member Brunner, that's trying to get some of these privacy measures instituted into our objective standards, so thank you for that. All right, that was just a little after-the-fact thing. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you very much. Uh, this would be the opportunity for the applicant to provide up to twenty minutes of testimony on this appeal. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Keely, uh, council members. Uh, I'm not gonna take up too much of your time because this appeal really is only tangential to the actual application that has been approved by the planning commission. I do want to point out, as Bruce said, that I have worked with him and neighbors from the beginning to try and mitigate the effect of this building on the neighborhood, and I remain open to pursuing further solutions, um, during the planning stage and during the building stage to try and address people's concerns about privacy, about the loading zone, uh, and whatever other issues they may have. Um, I ask you to, um, deny the appeal, uh, and approve the planning commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, what we will, uh, do at this point is we will take public comment from those who wish to provide it. Following public comment, what we will do is hear, uh, from Mr. Thomas for a five-minute rebuttal, so this would be the opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to testify on this item to do so. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Keely, city council. My name's David Carlson. Uh, several neighbors of this project have asked about the ADU conversions after the project is approved. They have been told that it is allowed, and there's nothing they can do about it. That is not true, and the neighbors, the planning commission, and the city council are being misled on this point. The city attorney has explained in superior court in the Food Bin Project lawsuit that conversion ADUs in a project just like this are illegal under both state law and city code. Playing a shell game of mislabeling the plans for planning commission and city council approval, only to turn around and add the ADUs in later, does not magically make something legal that never was legal to begin with. The city council is in no way, under any law or any legal precedent, required to approve fake amenity space clearly intended to be later converted to ADUs. Excuse me. The superior court agreed with the city on this point, and the appeal filed in the Food Bin case by this same applicant will surely fail. Courts are deferential to government agencies on land use issues, and there is no question this shell game is illegal under both state and local law. In addition, adding twelve additional units to this project after city council approval is by definition a major modification of the project. It requires it to come back to the city council for approval. It has nothing to do with ADU law or ministerial approval of ADUs. It's a major modification of the floor plans the city council is being asked to approve today. The city council would not be able to approve such a modification because conversion ADUs are illegal in proposed multifamily projects. The current mislabeling of the spaces on the plans is an acknowledgement of this fact, and the city council absolutely has the authority to require removal of these illegal spaces from the project. This is the same situation with the Clock Tower project. The only legal choice for the applicant on both projects is to go back to the drawing board, remove the illegal ADUs. In this case, that would result in reduction of the height of the building by an entire floor, potentially reducing the impact on the neighborhood. by an entire floor, potentially reducing the impact on the neighborhood. And in the case of the Clock Tower project, it results in the saving of two of the most iconic trees in downtown Santa Cruz. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who is with us who should testify on this? And I'll take your testimony now, and then what we'll do is we have some folks online, so we'll start toggling back and forth. But we will hear from you, sir. Good evening, and welcome to the council meeting.
I'm Craig Nedlin. I live on Palm Street, right across from a elementary school. And you guys should all go down there during the time when the kids are delivered and picked up, because it's packed. Okay, so I'm one of those that, whose backyard is violated by this six-story monstrosity, as I call it. I'm an economist, retired economist, but I'm also kind of amateur sociologist, and I can't believe that a, a project like this could get to this point in the first place. And I will be very brief. I think you guys should do your civic duty and push back on our state representatives in reference to the various laws that I've heard repeatedly, that nobody can do anything about. And so therefore, you know, talking defeat before any kind of fight or pushback seems rather premature to me. No parking, can you believe that? No parking, just go down those streets. Take a walk during when those kids are going across with bicycles and cars coming, little kids, I mean, really, it's dangerous now. So the loading zone is a parking problem. I'll tell you, on Palm Street, there's a real parking problem. And of course, you have to do it during certain hours, and those hours are clogged. To have this, you know, planning commission, basically, it's devolved into a rubber stamp commission for developers. You know, Mr. Goldberg is going to make a lot of money. Why doesn't he put some parking in there? You know, and this affordable housing, exactly what are the rents for this affordable housing? And on and on and so forth. I just think you guys should do your civic duty and push back. Vote no on this thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have someone online who wishes to testify. Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting. Good evening. Three, two, one. Next person in line, good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
Good evening, my name's Joe Hudson, and I live just one parcel away from the development on, I'm on Palm Street. I'm in one of those houses where they will be looking right down in our backyard. I want to speak, I mean, Bruce, thank you for speaking to the parking and traffic issues, which are very, very serious. But more broadly, the state mandated laws that are allowing these non-conforming projects in our neighborhood are based on flawed demographics. You know, the population of California is leveling off. And as a city, we're building feverishly, feverishly in the downtown area. And if we must build, that's where it should be. Projects adjacent to existing S F R neighborhoods, such as Mission Street Studios, the Food Bin Project, the Water and Ocean Street projects, these should be viewed in a different light than the downtown projects. These are the epitome of poor planning and will do more harm than good. You know, not only to our neighborhoods, but to the long-term goodwill and community support for additional housing and development. And then also to address the constant and much repeated threat of developer lawsuits against our city for denying an application such as this. You know, the residents of the city would support you guys in standing up for the city and the quality of life. There is precedent for local, precedent for local governments standing against, up against state laws. You know, just look at the county standing up against the sugar tax. That's state law. Stand up for the sugar tax imposed. That's the county going through, and so there is precedent to stand up against the state government. I would like to say, you know, the parking situation disaster waiting to happen. There are only fourteen spots for over sixty-seven units, most with two to four beds. This is potentially a hundred and fifty residents. You know, it's a fallacy that these people are going to show up without cars, friends, traffic, and the neighborhood just cannot support it. So I do think if, if it's going to be approved, we need to have a city program to put resident, residential permit parking only, no parking except by residential permit parking for the neighbors, and not allow future residents of this tower to have those permits, to protect the, you know, character of the neighborhood, and also addressing the balconies looking down in our backyards by orienting them towards Mission Street, putting up screens. You know, if you look at the proposal, there are several floors of balconies just looking straight down, and just the need for these balconies is not justified versus the detriment to the neighborhood. So I'm just going to say, we're not anti-housing, we're for housing that fits. This does not fit in the neighborhood, and we need housing that benefits the local workforce, and the Mission Street Studios proposal is not, is not that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else online? We're going to take next person on line, then we'll be right with you. First online, good evening, welcome to the city council meeting.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Let me just get this up, sorry. My name is Dana Rayfield. I actually live next to Joe, who is just there. I live directly next to this proposed sixty-seven unit, six-story development, and those dogs that you guys saw in the photo are my dogs. So I'm here to raise some serious concerns about how this growth is being handled, both in my backyard and across Santa Cruz as a whole. This particular project includes not only fourteen parking spots for over sixty-seven units. We all know that translates to over one hundred new vehicles being pushed onto already congested residential streets, creating safety issues, parking conflicts, and quality of life disruptions for existing residents. But what's more alarming is the complete loss of privacy and personal safety this building brings to my home. It will tower over my backyard, with windows looking directly into my bathroom, my bedroom, and yard. I will lose the ability to do everyday things, sit in the sun, read outside, garden, spend time with my family, or even feel safe in my own space. This is not just uncomfortable, it's violating. Backyard privacy is a basic expectation in California. We build fences, we plant trees, and we live with the understanding that our homes, especially our private outdoor space, are our sanctuary. This project destroys that. And I ask you honestly, would any of you be okay with a building like this behind your house? Would you feel comfortable or safe? More broadly, it is time to take a hard look at how growth is being managed in Santa Cruz. Development seems to be changing ahead without adequate consideration for the long-term impact on our infrastructure and our communities. Our roads, water systems, hospital capacity, emergency response, and overall public safety are already under strain. The current pace and the scale of development is simply not sustainable. I understand this particular project may already have momentum, but I strongly urge council and the planning commission to take a tactical pause, to reflect on whether the current trajectory is truly serving the people who live here now or just paving over the character and livability of our city. At the very least, I hope you will require this developer to add serious privacy mitigations, from louvered window coverings to privacy structures over my yard and deck so that my family can retain some sense of peace and dignity in our home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joanne Hudson. I own the property on Do Four, adjacent to the proposed project. I'm here to urge you not to approve this project. This project fails to address real safety concerns for the neighbors, for commuters on Mission Street, and for pedestrians and cyclists who use this corridor every day. The Mission Street Urban Design Plan lays out guiding principles. They're referred to in the developer's presentation package, improving the quality of life for West Side residents, protecting adjacent neighborhoods, contributing to a sustainable environment. This project fails to meet these goals. Instead, it compounds the existing traffic hazards, Do Four Mission Street, while not providing acceptable solutions. Mission and Do Four is already chaotic and dangerous. We have the Ramen House, customers, Uber drivers, deliveries that are double parking, idling in front of residential driveways, Starbucks, traffic, parking in the loading zone. We have semi-trucks delivering goods. They can't make the tight turning radius for, to even squeeze into the loading zone. They're currently parking in the middle of the street. Then we have residents trying to go to and from their homes and likely passing up their own street to turn down the next street and wrap around to their home. And now we're proposing a six-story building, a hundred and fifty tenants, likely more, and an unknown number of vehicles with no options for parking, as well as the addition of Amazon and UPS deliveries, all while backing, backing up traffic on Mission Street, the gateway to this residential neighborhood. We need clear solutions to the unresolved issues that this project presents. We need a comprehensive traffic impact report that takes all of these factors into account. That includes the existing constraints, the safety hazards, and the potential nuances of adding a hundred and fifty residents to navigate safely at the edge of and the crossing of Highway One. The trip study by an outside consultant stated a total of twenty-nine P M. trips. We need an explanation for what this number is based on. Are these tenant vehicles? Are they Amazon deliveries? What constitutes a trip? Too many unanswered questions for this project.
You want to, if you want to take ten seconds, go ahead and just wrap up.
I'd like to say that the public deserves transparent studies and thoughtful solutions before this project can be considered for approval. I'd also like to say that we know it can be done right here on the west side of Santa Cruz. We're witnessing years of great planning coming to fruition on Swift Street. And that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have anyone else online? We're going to take next person online, we'll be right with you. First online, good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, I think, I think I'm the one.
Yes, you are.
My name is Kira Johnson. I live on Do Four Street, towards, almost to California. And I would just like to say that the, the presentation echoed how it feels all the way down here, and there's a lot of traffic and parking issues that won't be solved by a local permitting system because there's already, it's challenging to park in front of my home, and they're not people parking at Starbucks. These are residents that already live on our street. There are neighbors that can't park in front of their house farther towards Mission, and so they're already walking blocks to park down here because there, it's such a mess up there by Mission. So this is a problem that's felt far, far away from that local area. And I know, driving on Highway One to take my kids to school, there's always a huge block, and it's because of these, these issues that are left turns and, and just poor traffic planning. So I would also like to see a, a traffic study because this is already a problem, and that's before this large development, which undoubtedly will bring more, more cars to the area. So thank you so much for, for your consideration and your, your thought in this process. And I just want to echo the sentiments of using the city council's role in our government to, to do a thoughtful design and to push back when, when external forces are asking us to change our city in ways that don't, don't, haven't been thought through at the local level. So thank you for, for your role in that. Please push back.
Thank you for calling in. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, city council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I am Elizabeth Lowry Burton. I live on Baldwin Street, about a half a block up Mission. And we very successfully fought a five-story proposal that was built ten years ago, beautifully executed, three-story, in scale with the neighborhood, no parking issues, nice livable units. The whole reason that people are bringing up all these problems is this building is too damn big. It's completely out of scale with the neighborhood. There is zero setback because of the C C zoning, which was predicated on the fact that there would be a three-story height limit. So it's ridiculous to require neighbors to be given so nicely by the developer, a thousand-dollar landscaping budget. It's a seventy-five-foot-tall building. We keep hearing six stories, it's seventy-five feet tall. That's taller than the buildings on Front Street. It does not fit in despite the planner's verbiage to the neighborhood character. It is hideously ugly, and it looks like a cheap motel. There has not been anything raised in the appeal about noise or light pollution. I will be able to see that building from my house, whereas I cannot see a three-story building, which I completely support, infill housing, using existing transit corridors. But this building is obscene. It is going to be the beacon of bad design. And I hope that you will come to your senses, not be, you know, hypnotized by words that are used to say that it was thoughtfully designed. It is not well-designed. And it's marketed for affordable housing, but let's call a spade a spade. It is a glorified U C S C off-site dorm. That brings up the question of noise pollution. Who's going to enforce the ten o'clock noise curfew? I often had, in my neighborhood, a neighbor that was student housing. I'd always arrive when they moved in with a plate of fresh baked cookies and a copy of the noise ordinance, and that worked really well. And that's going to be hard with two hundred residents. The site drawings show four beds in the two-bedroom units. So that, right there, to me, this is a prime example of not seeing the forest for the trees. The fact that the appeal was based only on the loading zone and not all these other very important problems, noise pollution, light pollution, lack of parking, doesn't match the character of the neighborhood. You can't screen a seventy-five-foot building with a tree. And it's completely out of scale. There are innumerable privacy issues, traffic, you've heard them all. I'm really requesting that you come to use your better angels and see how completely out of scale this building is. For all the nice verbiage, it's still out of scale.
Thank you. We have someone online. We're going to take next person online, then we'll be right with you. First online, good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, Fred, it's Bradley Snyder. Sorry to be such a frequent flyer at today's meeting. This is really similar to the Food Bin building that encountered a lot of opposition. And part of the reason for that is, I think, part of the same reasons this building is encountering, it seems like, almost unanimous opposition from those speaking to you today. One of the reasons is, heretofore, the largest building is on all of Mission, I believe is directly across the street from the proposed development, and it's, it's half as tall. And it took quite a while for Mission Street to go from two stories to three. You know, in some ways, it took quite a while, you know, a really, really long time for it to go from one to two. But going from three to six, actually, is probably one of the reasons that Sarah Palin never reached higher office, was the drill baby drill slogan she had. And in this case, I feel like that you've approved a building on Ocean Street, apparently. You've, you've already built about ten large, many, many unit developments downtown that have no, you know, real, reasonable parking facilities for those residents. And, you know, for the most part, there's always a nod to these things. But at some point, people really sort of need to band together and oppose this sort of thing. And, and the number of people that are saying to you to push back, I don't think they understand that this is more of the same from those interests that are building these things all, all over the city. And as someone who's lived on, you know, the edge of the city, past, past, you know, everything else in the city. everything else in the city, where the university wants to, you know, own the property out there. Seeing seeing some of the things that have already been built on Mission Street, it seems like there's already a bit much going on. Fortunately, some of the more egregious developments have been shot down. Sorry to use the, you know, not shot down, but just not approved. And, you know, in this case, I don't approve of this development. I think it's really trying to push the envelope. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling in. Good evening, welcome to the council meeting.
My name is Andrea Hudson, and I'm here to urge you not to approve the Mission-Dufour project. The housing mandates created a situation where you, council members, and planning department may have felt that you need to comply or risk losing state funding. The developers have been allowed to create these plans and build more stories, more units, and have less space between the development and the existing neighborhood than what normally ever would have been allowed. I'm here to remind you that just because the easy thing to do is to approve this at this point, because it sounds like it's going to be an absolute mess if you decide not to approve it, that does not mean that you should approve it. Just because it's the easy thing doesn't mean it's the right thing. As a lifelong Santa Cruz resident and a mother of two school age children that cannot safely cross Mission Street to reach Bayview School, where they both practice youth soccer, or to access the beach, or the homes of our family on Palm Street, and dozens of friends and relatives in the surrounding neighborhood over there, I just hope that you'll do what's the best thing long term for our city and for your long term residents and neighbors, rather than trying to pacify a blanket mandate. And I also wanted to mention, it's actually pretty difficult to figure out what, how much housing is really needed and what occupancy is of units that have already been built. Maybe it's something that you know, but it's actually difficult to look up as just a member of the public. And not to feel the need to feed the greed of a builder, and especially one that only builds the most soulless box buildings. It's they're really terrible to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good evening, welcome to the city council meeting.
I'll make this quick. I'm so lucky. I'm a lucky guy. My street is still pretty quiet. It's near there. And sure, the parking's slowly getting worse due to more ADUs, but so far, the owners of this street have not sold out to the outrageous zoning that you have authorized to replace SFR neighborhoods. Where's the limit? Where is the limit? Where do you draw the line before destroying the American dream of a single family home? Do you care? Sure, shrink related housing is happening, and maybe that's inevitable to economics, but does the density need to be as quick as possible, you know, six to 10 times the existing bedroom space? That's on you. Access building zoning is on you. There is such a thing as overbuilding. Bad things happen. Boom bust happens. People go broke. Even developers go broke. At least in this case, it isn't a socialist project publicly subsidized, which destroys the free market. Thanks.
Anyone else online? Mr. Thomas, this is your opportunity to provide five minutes of rebuttal. You may rebut any issues raised by the applicants. No new issues may be addressed at this time. Good afternoon, excuse me, good evening again, sir.
Evening, round the fringe there, huh? Yeah, thank you for hearing all this. I'm not sure what to do with that. I don't really have anything to rebut, but I would like to reiterate what I'm hoping will come out of this appeal. And that's that we will solve the loading zone enforcement issues at DuFour and Mission Street with an oversight mechanism, have city and developer do everything possible to limit the double parking on DuFour Street, and then, if possible, citizen involvement in these initiatives that hopefully can address some of the parking challenges that I know we're trying to develop new policies for. So that's about it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. The public hearing is closed. Matters back before the body. Pleasure of the body. The vice mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal as listed in the staff recommendation and with additional direction. I'll read it, and I've sent it to Ms. Bush. Direct staff to work with. Oh, no. That's not my motion. I will read what I have. Direct staff to increase parking enforcement, and I'll resend it to you.
Let's resend it so we can all see it together.
Sure.
If that'd be all right with you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion is to...
Do you have this?
Oh, yeah.
Let's just take a second here and make sure that Ms. Bush has that. This is you.
That's me.
There we go. Okay.
So the first, thank you, Ms. Bush. Apologies if my earlier email didn't get through to you. The first part is to deny the appeal as written in the agenda report. And the second part is to direct staff to increase parking enforcement for the next three to six months, and explore adjustments to parking restrictions on DuFour Street with particular attention to reducing double parking. Staff shall assess whether compliance improves during this period and meet with DuFour neighbor representatives as part of the evaluation.
Second.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Second by Councilmember O'Hara. Madam Vice Mayor, you may open on your motion.
Yeah, thank you. I just, I first want to acknowledge all of the neighbors. I've talked to many of you, most of you, I've met with you. So thank you for engaging, for reaching out. In particular, I want to thank Mr. Thomas for being the representative for the neighbors. I also want to acknowledge Mr. Goldberg for also meeting with neighbors, meeting with myself, and and listening to the community, listening to the community concerns, and making voluntary actions. I know that not all of the concerns that were brought up were incorporated, but you did try to incorporate many of the concerns. And the result is a better project. It still might not be the best project for some of the neighbors, but it is a better project from where we started. And I think this should be the process. It should be the process where there is dialogue between the property owner and developers and neighbors, so that we can come up with something that, again, it's not everyone is going to be happy with it, but it's better than where we started. The motion that I put forward is directly addressing the loading zone issue that Mr. Thomas, as the appellant, has brought forward. I know the additional conditions of approval, 54 and 67, touch on adding an additional loading zone, but they don't address the enforcement and oversight concerns that Mr. Thomas brought brought forward to us. So I believe my motion incorporates those. There's specificity around enforcement, but there's also, I think, some flexibility to explore some of the ideas that Mr. Thomas brought forward today. Talked about bollards, and you brought up a number of ideas, and I wanted to have some flexibility so we can explore those ideas and other ideas that we haven't thought about. I do just briefly, again, so my motion is really about the loading zone, but I just want to briefly comment on some of the comments. You know, one of the speakers spoke about a process 10 years ago, and I know you've heard this before, but the reality is that the policy landscape has changed, and there is very little we can do. We have tried and we are trying to work with state legislators, and in fact, we have been working to put forward a policy that gives back some local control to jurisdictions that have met their RENA goals. State legislators are not picking that up. There isn't any support. So my ask, my ask is to please continue to engage with us, please continue to come to these council meetings and and speak up and speak out, but please also contact not just your state legislators here in this area, but across the state, if you want to see some changes. The other thing I will say is that we understand that the transit proximate housing development is and will cause mobility and issues. And so Mr. Thomas spoke to this. We, several of us council members, brought forward an agenda item at the last meeting that gives some some solutions, some ideas of solutions, and asks staff to explore other ideas of solution to address some of these parking challenges. So I just want to say, I hear you. I know this isn't maybe the motion that that you all were looking for that I've just made, but I'm hoping that this addresses the loading zone issues and hopefully we'll continue to work out some of the other challenges you've brought forward.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Further, Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, and I want to express my appreciation to the vice mayor for your leadership on this. I do have a number of questions that I want to ask. I'm moving towards an amendment as the second, so hopefully this gets to some of the emphasis behind it. I was really taken aback by the pictures. And I will say, as a West Side neighbor, I have blocked personally. My children have parked in those commercial, I mean, it rang true to me that this is happening. And I think there is an inherent conflict of the business model on that corner with the business hours and that size of a delivery vehicle delivering during business hours. And I really appreciate your appeal shedding light, at least for me, on the significant public safety, traffic, and pedestrian issues that I think are inherent because of that conflict. We have very active businesses, in particular Starbucks, that are quick in and out businesses. I personally can say that my 17 year old probably double parks, runs in, grabs a latte, runs out. And so I think, you know, being a local authority in these positions where we have this direct experience gives me a lot of empathy for what you are talking about. I also personally think even making a right hand turn off of DuFour after picking up your Starbucks is harrowing. There's very little space to move forward to make a turn onto Mission. So the compounding of all of those different safety issues is a concern for me. So I appreciate the pictures that you brought up. I looked back at the agenda report to see if that was part of your letter. I don't think it was, and so it was particularly resonant with me. So I do have some, a couple of questions for staff. During the appeal tonight, I asked myself, why aren't we restricting the size of the delivery truck on DuFour? Why are we allowing 18, you know, wheel delivery trucks on DuFour? And is there, do we have the ability to limit size or delivery hours to ensure that or to at least minimize the conflict between open business hours and delivery hours?
There is a question. Who's who on the staff's going to take a shot at that? The Public Works Director is recognized.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public, Nathan Nguyen, Director of Public Works. So per the California Vehicle Code, there does allow some local authorities to enact a policy or a provision to restrict certain sized vehicles on locations within the city right of way. But in addition to that, there's also California Vehicle Code that also requires an agency to allow for business commerce, and that local agencies cannot restrict that type of delivery vehicles, in this case, for Starbucks. And so if we wanted to pursue an ordinance that would restrict vehicles, large vehicles, delivery vehicles on DuFour Street, to regulating them to have those vehicles have deliveries on Mission Street, we may be in conflict with the state, and we'd have to follow up to determine whether that would be something that would be allowable in their purview.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Nguyen. I think a follow up question is, and maybe this is for the maker of the motion as well, is it is it a reasonable expectation that the motion on the floor would allow for further engagement with Starbucks and the businesses around, is there potential of using a box truck, you know, for deliveries to that particular Starbucks? Have we engaged, you know, are there different ways for us to mitigate this issue other than just enforcement? Because we know that enforcement means that we are committing to having enforcement out there. There is limited capacity on behalf of our enforcement teams, and I do think design, I do think negotiation with the business, looking at conditions of use, looking at whether, you know, there are millions of Starbucks around the world, some in very small little areas of tight cities. I'm sure that they have experience with access to deliveries. And so I would, I would hope that we could, I think it does.
I think so. It says, and may I, Mayor? And explore adjustments to parking restrictions on DuFour, I think would capture that, but if if we need additional language, I'm...
Yeah, I believe the current motion, as it stands, does provide flexibility for staff to work with the neighbors, the businesses, potentially the state, on different options on how to mitigate the the double parking and issues that we're seeing on currently on DuFour.
Yeah, and I, as a follow up, I don't think moving the loading to Mission makes any sense at all, but restricting the loading times and loading truck size does make sense. And I do think that's within our purview or without, you know, we can't, we have to allow for reasonable access for commerce. That can be changing of hours, and it can certainly be changing of size of trucks. I mean, I would suggest that we look into that. I do have another follow up question. It might not be for you, Director, so I do want to have, I do, I do have a few comments about another kind of discovery that I had, reading through the appeal and reading through this project. And it really does get to, during the last four months, we've had three major development projects come in front of the the city council. This is the fourth, downtown plan expansion, the Ocean Street project, the Clock Tower project, and now this project. In reading through the Planning Commission Agenda Report, there was a lot of reflection on behalf of staff as to the original design was, let's just just say, subjectively substandard. The current design is much improved. And many thanks to the applicant for working with staff, with the Planning Commission, with the public to improve the design. In reading through that, it really did come to laser focus to me that there are opportunities to to improve design. It should not just be by virtue of negotiations with the applicants. And that is what I've been trying to get to over the last three or four meetings on these development projects is, are objective standards sufficient? Are we, for instance, if you could take in consideration Mission Street, are we working with neighbors to ensure that we understand what feels compatible to your neighborhood, whether it be a certain type of architectural facade, whether, whatever that might be? And I do think the city council has the ability to apply a more specific set of guidelines early in design, so early in the permit pipeline, to ensure that what just happened with this project can happen earlier, right? Because if it doesn't happen at preliminary design, we're kind of stuck. And I don't, I think it would be great for the planning director to talk a little bit about, or at least I have a question about this. If the city council were to provide a set of priorities for, let's just say hypothetically, design for Mission Street, if an applicant came to get, you know, a preliminary design permit, and you had in your hand, these are the designs... and you had in your hand, these are the design priorities of the city, would that ease this process? Would that be helpful for developers? Would, would you expect that that would, um, allow for what just happened with this, um, project to possibly be more seamless and, um, let's say, limit the amount of friction that is experienced between the public and the developer?
Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that question. Councilmember O'Hara, Lee Butler, Director of Planning and Community Development. And there was a lot there.
Yeah, sorry.
I'll, I'll try to be succinct in, uh, in my response. Um, let me, uh, hit the, the question that you posed first and foremost. Um, yes, I do believe that, um, as part of the negotiation process, understanding the council's key priorities to, um, negotiate with the developer is, uh, it is helpful, right? When we, um, have those initial interactions, we go through a series of things that we convey to them because, um, as we know, developers have quite a few ways of deviating from objective standards, right? Um, you, um, you mentioned that, you know, we could talk to them early and maybe head off some of these issues. I, I also want to be clear about setting expectations because we cannot ensure that those things happen. There are things that we can do, however. Um, you know, if we wanted to have specific architectural styles, we could have objective standards that say, in these areas, these are the, uh, architectural styles that are approved. Now, when it comes to standards like setbacks or heights or, um, step backs from the neighborhood, the neighborhood transition plan, for example, you know, with tools like the density bonus, all of that can just be overridden through the various density bonus and other tools that developers have. Um, but when we are having those initial conversations, we talk to them about things like, um, providing improved presence along the street, um, about, um, you know, having additional setbacks from the neighbors when that's possible, um, about providing, uh, open space for the residents so that the new residents also have a, uh, a high quality of life. Um, that's getting to the point that you made, Councilmember O'Hara, of what are the priorities that the council has for these? It is a negotiation. It's not something that we can require in most instances, even if we have objective standards that speak to those things. But knowing the most important things from the council does help us, um, set the stage for that developer so that we can say, the council has said, these are the four things that are most important to them. I know there are 50 objective standards, but focus on what you can do to improve these four things, and that's going to help, um, you know, alleviate some of the concerns that some of the community has, um, as demonstrated through the council's desire for these priorities.
Councilmember, would you yield for one second?
Sure.
Can I ask a question? Let's stay with this for a second. I think there is a difference between negotiating when the parties have equal power than there is in a conversation about what one party would prefer, who has almost no power in the conversation, with a party who has almost all the power in the conversation. You're talking about the latter, not the former.
You are correct entirely, Mayor, that it is the, it is a request that we would be making. That negotiation may not be the best, um, uh, choice of words there.
I'll just reclaim this. Let me just say, um, we've been through this. We go through this all the time. Um, with respect to the people who are here who say, stand up and push back. If we stand up and push back, they get a builder's remedy, right?
If we stand up and push back, then.
I mean, uh, let me tell you what I think that means. That means we say no.
Right. If we say no, then there are very clear housing laws that have a, uh, high likelihood that we are going to lose in court.
Right. I just want to get real about this. We can have these conversations, but at the end of the day, there's 125 laws passed in the last eight years that say we can't do most of what the public shows up here and asks every time. You and I went through this drill the other, a, a year ago on, on Hagaman. If this same project was in front of us 10 years ago and we said, the same issues are there. It's too tall, there's too many units, and there's not enough parking, and it creates all these problems. What we would have the authority to do is reduce the units, increase the parking, and move on. We have none of those authorities, am I right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for that clarification. I'm talking about something slightly different than that. I'm not talking about saying no to the project. So, um, what I would like to kind of close with, um, we, we have, as a council, over the last several meetings, particularly the ones that I mentioned already, provided direction to staff to look at objective standards, develop an objective standards toolkit, look at the Ocean Street Plan to evaluate the subjective nature of the Ocean Street Plan. Um, there was additional direction for the Clock Tower Project as well, looking at objective standards. Um, I think that there is a better path forward to get to this issue of, if you look at the staff report slides, particularly with regard to the back of the building, it is unimaginable that we could go from a white, no, no articulation to something that is at least reasonably within the character of our current preference, let's say, as a community around architecture, and not be at liberty, liberty to at least say to the applicant at the beginning, this would be our preference. I don't think it is a negotiation. I think we are very limited in terms of our negotiation, negotiating, um, power, but I think it's incumbent upon us to say, this is what we would prefer as a community. So I would like to move forward with a friendly amendment for the mo- motion maker. Um, let's put it up here. I did work with, um, exhaustively with staff on this. I appreciate the Planning Director's help with this and the City Manager. Um, what I'm trying to do with this is.
Well, let's get the motion before you explain it.
Yep, let's get it. Okay, perfect. Direct staff to, with the council, I'm sorry, direct staff to, yeah, sorry. I'm, uh, work with the Council Ad-Hoc Housing Subcommittee to evaluate ways in which the city may have greater influence over architectural styles, building design, and site design for proposed development, with particular attention given to early stages of the development review process when there is greater likelihood of design changes being incorporated. Staff should include prior time-sensitive council direction on housing and objective standards in this direction. As I mentioned, City Council public hearings on August 12th, June 24th, I'm sorry, that's 2025, um, Bonnie, um, and May 15th, 2025, discuss with the Subcommittee this calendar year and report back in the first quarter of 2026 with policy recommendations.
Is that considered a friendly amendment by the maker of the motion?
It is, and I have follow-up questions.
Is that agreeable to the second of the motion?
I am the second, thank you.
I understand, I asked the question.
Thank you.
You agreed to it, so that's included. Go ahead.
I, yeah, just to the comments that the mayor made, um, um, I want to take it back to staff and ask your input around the language of greater influence over architectural style, building design, and site design for proposed development. Um, I, I guess, I, I said it's, it's acceptable, but I just want to make sure that we are, um, setting accurate expectations. What does greater influence mean? And do we actually have greater influence? So there may be a amendment to your friendly amendment. I just want to be really clear about what we can and can't do.
Sure. Um, I think this gets back to the mayor's comments. So that's a, a great question, Vice Mayor Calentara-Johnson, um, because, um, the power does rest with the developers. They have the ability to use waivers or concessions, incentives, um, through the density bonus, which nearly every large project, every large project these days basically uses the density bonus. And that not only gives protections under the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 and the Housing Accountability Act, but also under the density bonus, which provides even more, um, opportunities and more rights to the developer. Um, so, um, the, uh, the ability to have greater influence, um, will be very limited. I think, um, the, the spirit behind Councilmember O'Hara's, um, desired amendment, as we discussed, was, um, how do we get from, you know, encouraging the developer at the early stages when we see applications like the prelim that came in, and it was just a preliminary review at that time, um, to, um, know that we would like to see some of these other changes, even if we can't require it? And I want to just, one more thing, I just want to be clear. We do that, um, but, um, one of the things that we talked about with Councilmember O'Hara is, you know, what are those council priorities, right? If, if we've got 50 objective standards, um, are there some that are the most important to the council? That the council would really like to see us focus on? And I think that that's worth a discussion, um, so that even if we don't have that power, we can still ask and we can still say, we know that these are the most important things. It will be up to the developer.
Yeah.
Stating, stating those, those, uh, expectations, the developer will get to choose.
If I could chime in real quickly, too. I, I appreciate the question, and I think it is important to draw a distinction between greater control from greater influence, and that was really kind of the intention around that language. We could even go a step further to say greater collaboration over architectural styles, if that feels better, just in terms of wanting to set expectations with the community around what's possible and what's not. But that was the spirit of the language there, to make clear that we're not increasing control. That's beyond, uh, our purview at this point.
That would feel more comfortable if that's okay for Council, um, Councilmember O'Hara to change it to greater collaboration. I know we're wordsmithing here, but I think it's important because what we say has impact and will set expectations that, and I don't want to create false expectations for the public.
Thank you. I, I'm very comfortable with that, Lee. Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Perfect. Um, I don't have any further comments. I will say that one thing that I think is critically important to take away from this friendly amendment is that there were time, there was a lot of time-sensitive direction from the last three meetings that was very comprehensive. And we have a very limited staff capacity with our housing elements to do the work that's in the housing element. And so in feedback from staff around, how do we get some control of what we're trying to do, looking at, how do we collaborate more? What does that influence look like? It could be a multitude of different things. It could be work, building, uh, design standards team like we have for the downtown, um, for citywide projects. It could be updating certain objective standards. It could be eliminating these general plan, um, overlays that are no longer relevant, um, in our community. Um, so rather than doing all of those piecemeal in a time-sensitive manner, I'm suggesting we wrap all those together and use our current, um, ad hoc committee, which is comprised of the mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Newsom, to take more time with us, be more deliberate, and not be so time-sensitive. So I just want to make sure that that is understood as well.
Councilmember Golders recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you made most of my comments, Mayor, but I do have a couple of questions. The first one's for the city attorney regarding this. Is this an appropriate, um, um, amendment or, you know, friendly amendment to the motion in line with what's before us in regards to the appeal? Is this okay?
I don't have any objections to this language.
And then my next question for you, um, Madam City Attorney, is around the ADU. So, um, it was brought up to us, and while they weren't part of the appeal, you know, can you speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Um, what, one thing that was brought up was, uh, the city's litigation in the food bin, which is a similar situation. And, uh, the city attorney's office did, uh, obtain a trial court-level victory in that case, and I reviewed that decision today. And if you look at the court's decision, um, the existing appellate precedent are the cases, uh, Bankers Hill and Womer. And what those cases say is that, um, essentially, the city can't reject a project or density bonus just because there are amenities, right? So in the Bankers Hill case, for example, I believe there was an interior courtyard, and the city in question there tried to say, no, you actually don't need to go up so high because you don't really need to provide this courtyard. And with the court, the appellate court said in that case was, well, actually, city, you take the project as it comes to you. These people are deserving of amenities, and basically the density bonus law doesn't say anything about having to strip the project of all amenities. And so in our food bin case, uh, we distinguished that appellate precedent by saying, actually, there are no amenities being provided here because the record was very clear that, um, those ADUs, uh, were, sorry, that the, that quote-unquote "storage space," uh, was going to be converted to ADUs. It was on the plans, it was throughout the process. In this case, um, they are labeled as storage spaces. Uh, I'm not aware of anything in the record that would, uh, suggest that there are definitive plans to change these storage spaces to ADUs. And so we're sort of back in the similar position of the Bankers Hill case where we're, we're forced to look at the project with the amenities that are being proposed by the applicant.
Thank you. Um, I do empathize with the neighbors in regards to the parking and the other issues, the privacy issues. I also think about how Mission Street has changed since it's widened, I think, whenever that happened in the late 90s. And then as developments have come online, like the one kind of across the street at Baldwin, and then when Long's was built at Olive, and when Pamp was built at, like, Treskini and Laurent. And so we've done some changes to, um, the street infrastructure in those cases. And so I'm wondering, Director, when is there an opportunity? And I'm not prepared to make, um, an amendment at this point, but I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity here to explore. I know, I appreciate the four-way stop that was at a Du-4 in Seaside after Starbucks was, was, um, was open. It, it got a little chaotic and dangerous over there. And so I don't know what could be done, but in terms of mitigating traffic, it might be coming to that, like, critical point where we need to look at maybe some other measures, I guess.
Mr. Nguyen.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Golda, for the question. Uh, so on Mission Street, Caltrans did an undergrounding project in the early 90s in which widened the roadway and created the two lanes without the utilities, uh, in the roadway that you see today. Uh, Caltrans is actually in the process of doing a, um, maintenance project. It's called the CAPM project that is anticipated to be implemented in '27 or '28. And that will include essentially repaving all of Mission Street and adding some additional enhancements along the roadway. Uh, they've done, already done some of the improvements already on Mission Street with the Hawk Crossing Systems. Um, I can't remember the exact cross streets off the top of my head, but I believe they've installed two or three ahead of that CAPM project. You'll see some additional curb ramps, um, some potential islands out there to help improve, uh, again, the roadway, um, safety system there. But beyond that, there's not a full, uh, safety project that's being planned on, uh, Mission Street. It's a part of, uh, Caltrans's effort.
Is there something that we can do in terms of just that block of, um, Du-4 right there?
Yeah, I believe as a part of the des- design, um, I'd have to double-check if we included a bulb out at that intersection. I believe Du-4 has a bulb out.
It has to be constructed to, like, accessibility requirements, um, so.
You need to speak directly in that microphone.
Um, the walkway, um, across Du-4 Street, um, along Mission Street will be improved to meet accessibility, um, requirements. And the sidewalks are also going to be widened along Mission Street and Du-4 Street as well.
I guess, I, sorry, I guess that what I'm, what I'm saying is, I've also seen the semis, and sometimes they're even parked the opposite way on Mission Street right there in front of Starbucks. And I'm just, it blows my mind because they had the former drive-thru at the bank right there. Why the delivery trucks aren't going in that way? Or why it's blocked off and fenced off so customers aren't forced. so customers aren't forced to leave the Starbucks parking lot via Mission Street and maybe turn right or left out of Mission Street. There's two spots, they could go either way. And so one thought that I have is, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but would be blocking off the street there at some point on maybe just the driveway side of the project. Make it a red zone, or red-only loading, or make it one, you know, you can only turn into the neighborhood, but you can't come out. I don't know. I don't really know what would be the most effective way, but how it's happening on the other streets, kind of by... It's, I know that the neighbors, where, once they built Pam, the neighbors on Laurent and, what's the next street? Van Ness? Yeah. On those, between there and California, whatever the city did has significantly, you know, improved the quality of life for the neighbors. And so I just wonder if we could do some additional staff direction to, in addition to the parking, look and explore ways that we can mimic what we've done as we're moving down. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, absolutely. And appreciate those comments. I do think that the language is broad enough for staff to do that. That's the intent, is to both look at the traffic configuration as well as the parking impacts. So we appreciate the input and direction from the council, and we're happy to look at what options might be feasible.
Yeah, that's, those are essentially my comments. And I completely echo what the mayor said. That was what I was going to say. Thank you.
Further debate or discussion? Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question and a couple comments. Thank you to the neighbors for coming and sharing your concerns and for letting us know how you feel. We are representative of the people, and it's important to understand impacts throughout the city and the community. And I won't repeat what's been said here with these housing and new developments that are rapidly growing. They are having changes and impacts, and we're navigating through this with you as well. We take what you say as direction as well. And so if you may not see it here, we do advocate at different levels and work on different initiatives. And I encourage you also to advocate and work as well towards what you would like. So I just wanted to say that to the neighbors. To the developer, I just wanted to briefly say, you know, we, not all developers, for example, the city was, you know, four of the recent new developments were city-led projects. And so not all of the developers are, we're not catering to greedy developers, this narrative. And so I want that to just be understood with kind of our direction and how we implement policy within our limitations as well. It's not driven by developers. We do what we can to support our neighbors. I have some questions about... This is a California State Highway, and that's like the elephant in the room here. I'm, I drive it. I've walked it, and I've been to this location after receiving all the emails. And I'm just wondering what role the state plays in collaborating with city staff in terms of improvements, safety, traffic, parking, deliveries, trucks, signage?
Mr. Nguyen asked you the question.
Good evening. Yeah, I'll take a shot at answering that question. So we review projects, I think, with Caltrans when it comes to access and parking. And so in this case, this is a project that was reviewed by Caltrans and within their purview to accept. There's been no other comments that I understand at this point from Caltrans regarding this project. And so I think that's all at this point that we have.
And then my other question, based on the appeal from Mr. Thomas, is there a reason why current commercial loading zone is specific times? Can it... I know it's probably going to be explored in the motion that was made in terms of hours, but it seemed that a big issue was people parking, just regular vehicles parking quickly in the loading zone. And so I'm just wondering if there's a reason why it can't be commercial loading only?
At this point in time, I don't believe there's any specific reason why it cannot be a 24/7 commercial loading zone, and it's a part of the current motion. We'll be exploring that with the businesses as well as the neighbors.
Okay, great, thank you.
Further debate or discussion? Couple of thoughts. One is, for the gentleman that asked if we were doing anything about this 10 years of 125 pieces of legislation to tear down the barriers to development, the answer is that this city sponsored legislation introduced in January of this year by a member of the Assembly, which said the following: "If you are a city which has a certified housing element of your general plan, and you are a city that received a pro-housing designation from the state of California, and if you are a city which met all of its RENA requirements in the last eight-year cycle, and if you're a city that is a self-help city because you've adopted an ordinance as such with regard to affordable housing, then, which takes it down to about 3% of the cities in the state of California, then and only then can you get some relief from the kinds of things that you object to." We couldn't get that bill set for a hearing in its first committee in Sacramento. I want you to understand what we're up against here. This isn't, gee, we could do it if we wanted to do it, and we're just kind of like rolling over, whatever it may be. Why don't you be really clear on this? 10 years ago, if we say we had 100% land use authority, we have less than 15% of the authority that we used to have, and we are pushing back as best we can. But I want to characterize what that pushing back is about. It's not about, because I heard you, you're not opposed to housing, new housing. I heard you testify that you're opposed to this particular kind of new housing. That's our issue as well. That we have a community that, frankly, in my opinion, for too long, didn't do enough with regard to housing. A lot of communities in California didn't do enough with regard to housing. What happens? The state legislature responds. They're not even close to finished on this. If you don't like what's happened so far, you're really not going to like what's going to happen over the first, the next few years. City manager, and the assistant city manager and I, if you've noticed, we've been walking in and out of this meeting. The reason we're walking in and out of this meeting is because we were told this morning that the legislature has about 80 hours left in session. There is a rule that as of midnight tonight, you can no further amend bills in the legislature. And they have three days then to vote on those bills. Reason we've been leaving the room is because the Realtors Association is trying to kill anything that you can do on affordable housing. And we've been going in and out of this meeting trying to get amendments in on the Senate side. We fight every day on this issue, including the last several hours. So I'm with you on this, that we need more housing, but we don't need it done the way the state of California is requiring us to do it right now, which is damn any local issues that you have, whether it's setbacks, whatever it is. The mood in the state of California and with regard to the governor, and this isn't about whether you're Republican or Democrat or Libertarian or Vegetarian, they're all pulling in the same direction on this. So I want to underscore where we are at with regard, that the motion that is on the table is a virtuous motion. However, I want to rein the expectation in about what, if this motion passes, which I suspect it will, and then we come back with further guidance and further words on paper and so on. If you think what that's going to do is materially change what you see going on, I think we've misled you. I think there may be very, very de minimis things that can be done here and there. They have, the legislature and the governor have wrapped their arms around this so tightly that whatever we can figure out as a move here and a move there and a move somewhere else, there'll be a bill next year to stop us from making those moves. So this is different than whether or not the merits of the appeal on a loading zone are meritorious. They certainly are, and we're going to vote for that, and we're going to do the best we can. But, and let me say one other thing. Let's assume for a moment that the motion has some teeth to it. And I'm not disparaging my colleagues. What they're doing is trying to find, where is the movement we've got here? And let's play it to the maximum extent possible. I'm going to support that. I think that's a really good idea. But let's just take a second here and think about this. So what is the current strategy? The current strategy is to over-propose and then change it to appear to be responding to the community. But in actual fact, virtually nothing changes. How many units and how much parking? Virtually none of that ever changes. And that's what people don't like. It's too many stories and not enough onsite parking, and it's going to screw up the neighborhood. That's what people don't like. This isn't going to give you any relief from that. It is a meritorious motion. It is a substantive motion. It matters. We're going to do our best to fight for our 15%, which will next year be 12%. The year after that is going to be 8%. And I challenge you to watch that happen as we move along, and the clerk will call the roll.